Service Committee, January 9th, 2025.
It's got a little heavy, didn't it? Call to order, Service Committee meeting. All present, C. Aaron Sherick, Kevin Myers, Zion Hickman, I myself, Christopher Moritz, Chair. Any public participation at this time? Seeing none, I'd like to have a motion for approval of minutes for December 19th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the December 19th, 2024 Regular Service Committee meeting.
C. Aaron Sherick first, Zion Hickman second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Per the administration, I'd like to see if I can get a motion to add Auditor Kaylee Lewis to the Board of Control pursuant to revised Code 73312-21.
Any thoughts on that? If we want a motion to have her added to it?
I have a couple of questions first. Is there a length of time for a term for this, or is it just an appointment until?
So it'll be the appointment of the auditor, whoever the auditor is.
Okay. So not her name mentioned, but?
It's a standing.
Not her name, just the auditor, her position.
Right. It's a standing committee that requires the Service Director, the Safety Director, and the Mayor, whoever those are. However, we've combined the Service and Safety Director into one. It makes sense to put on a third, and it makes sense that that be the auditor.
I'll make a motion to add the auditor to the Board of Control. Is that the actual title?
I'll second that. C. Aaron Sherick first, Mr. Myers second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Going to bring up the street levy renewal. I'm assuming everybody wants to renew that?
Yes.
If so, I'd like to have a motion to, by someone, to renew that?
Pass this on.
Pass it.
To the Finance Committee.
Pass it under Finance Committee, right. For their approval.
But I think the legislation will come out of this committee, correct?
Do what?
The legislation for the street levy renewal should originate from service, not finance.
Hmm, yes. Okay. So, did you already make a motion, Aaron?
I can make a motion to request the, was it legislation for the street levy renewal to be placed on the next election ballot?
As an emergency pending approval by Finance Committee.
Thank you. As an emergency pending approval by Finance Committee.
I was going to say, we've got a deadline coming up, so.
Yeah, we got a deadline, yeah.
What is that, February 4th?
Before May, yeah.
Yeah.
Second that. First by Aaron. Do they have a second?
Hickman.
Hickman, second by Hickman. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Any open projects anybody wants to talk about?
Not this evening.
Nope. Don't see any. Public participation again.
Kevin Long, 625 South Spring Street. I just want to know about the water.
That is right now in Law Director's hands as we speak, because everybody's going through it again. He's going through and dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's. And it will be probably next committee meeting.
Which one?
It'll be brung up, next committee meeting. It'll be brung up, everybody will see it, documents of the man will have it, the right one, and everybody will be able to look at it.
As long as it's right.
As long as it's the right one.
Assuming nobody has any more comments.
Right.
Thank you.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. Since the Service Committee oversees the public access website for the city of Bussaras, which is a government agency website, it has come to my attention that people have been making threatening comments on there, but they were never removed. There was no checks and balance. Two, I just found out recently from Tuesday night's meeting that certain comments on there were never posted or deleted or not posted. As long as they follow the rules, you're violating people's First Amendment rights. Okay? There are rules and regulations on that government access website. So not posting someone's comments is opening up the city to potential litigation for First Amendment constitutional rights. Threats should have been taken down, but weren't. So, there's going to be more coming out of this, I guarantee you. I just wanted to let you know that I'm going to do, I want a full investigation into this, of what's going on, and who's doing what, and why is it being done. Thank you.
Mr. White, it's not currently an open project, so we can't discuss it tonight. So what I'll do is I'll make a note at our next council meeting, I'll refer it back to this committee so it can have further discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Here in 100 Rogers Street. I just want to clarify, the street is a renewal, it is not new taxes, correct?
Right.
Thank you.
Walter Hill Jr., 99, Waterford Glen, I'm just here about the insurance on a taxi that we're supposed to have.
This is Service Committee, that'll be during the Health and Safety Committee, which is our third meeting of the evening. So this is the first, then we have Economic Development, and then Health and Safety is when you can speak on that.
Thank you, Kevin. Any more public participation? Seeing none, will adjourn at 6:07.
Economic Development Committee, January 9th, 2025.
I'd like to call on Economic Development Committee to order at 6:07 PM. Members present are Vicky DeShawn, Christopher Moritz, C. Aaron Sherick, and myself, Zion Hickman, Chair. Have any public participation for Economic Development? Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of minutes from the December 19th, 2024 Regular Economic Development Committee meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the December 19th, 2024 Regular Economic Development Committee meeting.
I'll make a second.
Have a motion by Sherick, a second by Moritz. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Have anything on open projects we wish to discuss?
Does that mean, have you had an opportunity to talk with Sarah?
Yes. She notified me that it is still being worked on.
Okay.
She said, I think it was email I sent Monday, she said that she moved it to the top of her priority list. There is interest in having that workshop, so.
On SEDA?
In JED, yes.
And JEDA, or and JED, yes, thank you.
Moving on to the last public participation for Economic Development.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. I'm hoping that the Chairman of this Economic Development Committee will have the partnership bring their correct information to their fourth quarter report, okay, about the city of Bussaras, okay? Second of all, it came to my understanding this past week that a bar cart was purchased by some means, okay? I never said why, who bought it, or anything. So, but then there was post on the government, on your web, on the light feed, Angie Rayborn said the pedal trolley was bought by a local business. And then Rachel Myers said absolutely untrue about the bed tax money purchasing the pedal trolley. I thought that kind of interesting, that these people know more than the Chairman does. I mean, don't you think he should come to tell us about stuff that's going on within Economic Development and the partnership and the Visitors and Travel Bureau and stuff? I mean, once again, we're seeing no reports, and nothing's going on. So I thought that was kind of interesting, and, excuse me, I'm not done yet.
That was bought by a private business and a private group, so they don't have that information here.
Well, whatever. So, so now, do we have laws on the books for pedal beer cart in the city of Bussaras? I looked it up, there's nothing. So now are we going to have to make a law? You know, what kind of insurance are we going to put on this thing? I mean, an open air beer trolley going around the city of Bussaras? How's that promoting tourism or whatever? Thank you.
Any more public participation for Economic Development? Seeing none, will adjourn at 6:11 PM.
Health and Safety Committee, January 9th, 2025.
I call the Health and Safety Committee meeting to order at 6:12 PM. Members present are Kevin Myers, C. Aaron Sherick, James Meany, and myself, Vicky DeShawn as Chair. First, we have public participation. Anybody wishing to speak to the committee, please come to the podium, state your name and your residential address, and then you may begin talking.
Walter Hill Jr., 99, Waterford Glen, Bussaras. I was there once for the insurance that Mr. Myers was trying to force on us small taxi businesses coming in town. I mean, I don't see how that that's possible to force it on a small business when he don't sign our license, he don't pay our fees, we do. Then I think what they need to focus on is let us alone, that's a taxi in Bussaras, and go after the people that's not licensed as a taxi, because I know a certain party that does taxi service, some of the charges, people, there ain't no advertising on his banner, nothing. I see it every weekend and every day. I mean, I don't think that's right, to take our business from us if he's not a licensed taxi. I mean, I've had the coverage, I've had the insurance coverage that Lieutenant Burrisby told me I had to have to operate. I've had that insurance, I mean, ever since I started, and it's not no high dollar insurance either.
I think Mr. Myers wanted to speak on this matter.
You want to wait till public participation?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, yes. Do you have anything else to say? And then after everyone else has, after our public participation, we will then talk about the taxi insurance requirement.
Okay.
So if you'd just like to have a seat then, thank you.
I need to wait till open projects.
Okay, fine. Any other public participation? Okay, seeing no one. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the December 19th, 2024 Regular Health and Safety Committee meeting. I will say before I ask for a motion, I do have a number of revisions.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Can we table those and let you send your revisions to the clerk, and then present them again at our next meeting?
Yes. And when I say revisions, let me correct that, they are suggested revisions. So do we need to do a motion to, for me to send these on to Miranda?
Correct.
I'll move the tablet and send it back with your suggested changes.
I'll second that.
Motion by Myers, second by Sherick. Roll call. Myers?
Yes.
Sherick?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn? Yes. Okay. Next, we have, Gary, were you wanting, or Mr. Miller, were you wanting to talk any on the?
I'm not talking. I'm going to have public participation.
You want to wait till the end? Okay, fine, thank you. Next, we have on the agenda our wavelength cameras, or wavelength and cameras. And I guess the last discussion on this, or I guess I'd like to ask the administration where we stand on this. I know there was going to be a list of what cameras we do and don't need, and where they feel they should be placed.
I do have.
Oh, excuse me, and then also, you were getting quotes from COSI and Spectrum, and potentially some others. That was at our December 2nd Special Health and Safety Committee meeting. Got those? Okay.
That's quotes just for cameras. There's no infrastructure or install of them yet. He's still trying to get numbers around. COSI, that's COSI.
This is COSI? Is this a copy that?
Yep.
Okay. And then I will see that Miranda gets this then to pass on to the committee members, because I think at this point in time, there's really nothing more, do you think, to discuss until, you're waiting for infrastructure figures as well? Is that what you're saying to me?
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Myers, did you have any?
I thought you were asking me, and I was just going to say, it's an administrative thing in my opinion, so.
Okay. Okey dokey. Next on the, well, open projects. Pardon?
And I must go on the taxis.
Yep, I would like to discuss that.
Yes.
Is that?
Sure, go ahead, because I've got a number of things on here.
And Mr. Hill, you'll get a chance to talk back and forth with us too, but to your point, Mr. Myers didn't push anything on you. The Health and Safety Committee passed legislation unanimously, of which I was the chairperson at the time, and at that time, the chairperson wasn't even casting a vote. So I just want to clarify that it was a four-member committee that passed that legislation and not one person. And after some further review, I would like to request legislation that does remove the million-dollar limit, because it's not our job to do that. When I found out, the Ohio Administrative Code 4901:2-13-03 already sets that limit. So I would like to request a legislation that removes that dollar amount and has language that just says, "We will refer to the Ohio Administrative Code" with that section. That way, if the state changes it, we don't have to worry about changing our legislation.
And the state is set at a million, too?
No.
What are they set at?
It is set at 1.5 million.
Oh, so we're going to go up.
The state already.
The state's already set it.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'll second that.
You made the motion. Motion by Myers, second by Sherick. Roll call, vote. Myers?
Yes.
Sherick?
Yes.
Me?
Yes.
DeShawn? Yes. And another thing that I'd like to point out on the taxi insurance requirement, that according to our Codified Ordinance Section 381.04, it says, "No person shall engage in the business of operating a taxicab or permit same to be operated until and unless the applicant for a license hereunder deposits with the Mayor a policy or certificate of commercial automobile liability insurance," which I'm assuming, we're going to keep that same verbiage.
Yeah, I just want it saying that we aren't mandating the dollar amount, the state already is doing that.
Because in my checking with Lieutenant Burrisby, and in also talking with the Mayor, nobody has copies of a policy or a certificate, that is, the individuals that are, that have taxicab services, I'm being told, have not provided to, and according to this section, it's to be provided to the Mayor, a copy of the policy or certificate that confirms that they do have, you know, this coverage. So just a reminder that that's something that we're going to have to make sure is done. So did you understand, Mr. Hill, what's happening?
Yes. Yes, but I'm just doing what Lieutenant Burrisby told me I had to have on those coverage.
Do you have any comment to make to that, Mr. Goldberg?
He told me, as long as I had 25,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hill, I'm sorry, I forgot to ask.
That's not correct.
Thank you.
That's private policy.
I spoke with Officer Burrisby the very first time I thought about starting my own. He told me, as long as I had 25,000 and $50,000 coverage, I was okay. And he does have a copy of my insurance on file, because I just got my city permit from Officer Burrisby, and I also have my certificate that Mr. Truca signed, thinking I am a taxi service.
Okay.
But my other concern is, why don't somebody go after that other person that's acting like one that ain't even licensed?
Have you reported that to anybody?
I see it every day and every night.
My question is, have you reported that to the police department? How else would they know to go after them? You need to make them aware so that they can do that, otherwise there's.
I have.
Okay. That's what my question was.
So.
Your question then would be asking the police department why they haven't followed up on what you've reported, then. That's not, that's not something the council can do.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Just for clarity purposes, I'd like to point out that Ohio Administrative Code 4901: 2-13-03C states, "For higher motor carriers engaged in the transportation of passengers in intrastate commerce," intrastate commerce, "shall maintain minimum levels of financial responsibility covering public liability in an amount of," Section 2, "$1,500,000 if operating vehicles with seating capacity of 15 passengers or less, including the driver." So, I think it's a good idea to just default on what the state says. I could be right, I could be wrong, but the state, at the end of the day, is always right. Yep, that's why I made the motion the way I did.
Anything else on that topic? So we did do our motion, did we vote?
Yes.
Okay. All right, next, on open projects.
So, you're going to come up with that change in legislation?
Correct.
Okay.
Is our marijuana. Our recreational marijuana and our medical marijuana. I received yesterday from the Law Director drafts for both of those chapters. I did not email those drafts to the committee members until this morning, so I'm not sure if there's been an opportunity to look over the legislation. I will say, I have a few changes that I would like to suggest. You want to bring those up on your?
Yeah, what do you got?
Well, first off, on the chapter 704. I'm thinking the caption maybe needs to read a little different. Right now, it says, "It's an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7." Well, it's Chapter 704. Well, let's see, yeah, you've got "amending and supplementing Chapter 7 of the Bussaras City ordinances and creating Chapter 704." Well, we don't have a Chapter 7. At least, I'm not finding a Chapter 7.
No.
We have a Part 7.
It should be Part 7.
So my thought is, if we would say, "An ordinance creating Chapter 704 entitled state-licensed medical marijuana cultivators, processors, retail dispensers, and testing laboratories under Part 7 entitled Business Regulation Code of the Codified Ordances of the City of Bussaras, Ohio." Then you would move down to your Section 1, and you could start out with, like what you have, that Chapter 704 entitled state-licensed medical marijuana, and then just remember to put in, "Under Part 7 entitled..." Because we need to get that Part 7 in there. And I mean, feel free to say that you don't agree with me, these are just...
No, I should have read, "Part 7 on creating Chapter 7." You're right.
But, no, we're not creating a Chapter 7.
No, you're creating Chapter 704.
Right.
Right. It should read, "Part 7 creating Chapter 704."
Are you done with those?
Yep.
And then on, we're passing it, you know, pass this blank day of blank, and then also approve this blank day of blank, we need to change 2024 to read 2025? And I don't know, did the committee members, did you have any chance today to look at this? I mean, if you didn't, I totally get it, because I didn't send it till you till this morning. And unlike me, who's retired, I have all the time in the world to look stuff over. So I don't know if the committee wants to hold this and then review?
I looked at it, I did not get a chance to read it.
That's fine.
I'll retell.
Okay. Then we're also looking at the next piece that has to do with the medical marijuana. And that's pretty much the same as the other, that we're creating Chapter 705 under Part...
70.
Yeah. But... Yeah. But, in this caption, we're referring to Chapter 705 as "state licensed medical." That should be "state licensed adult use," because down in the bottom, that's what you're referring to Chapter 705 as.
Correct.
"State licensed adult use." And it's, you know, and Section 1 just needs to be revised to recite adult use and Part 7. Then, under Chapter 705, where you outline the purpose, the definitions, and the locations, we refer here in the draft to 704. We need to change all those 704s to read 705, since this is Chapter 705 that we're talking about. And then, just the same, again, with the signature or the passing and the approval, just changing 2024 to 2025.
Good to hear.
So, that'll give you something to, on your draft, to revise. And then, we'll just hold that until our next meeting to discuss more. Next, peddlers and solicitors. That, again, was a draft that I was given yesterday by the law director, emailed it this morning to the committee members. That one, definitely, I need time to look over. That's a, that's a big one. Yeah, it's a, it's a long one. I don't think, I mean, I have, but I'm not gonna go through. Yeah. So, the committee's fine with, at our next meeting, then, we'll, you'll look between now and then or read...
I know formal had 2024, so it's 705.
Yes, yes.
So, just a little clarification.
Sure.
And yellow and red, the red needs to be taken out, is that what you're saying? And the yellow needs to be changed?
Um, I don't have a colored printer, so when I print it off...
Well, that's what I got.
Well, that's, ask the law director, I'm assuming, because he's the one that prepared the draft.
Okay, Mr. Prepare.
Yes, last question.
So, is the red, is that what you're changing or adding or taking out or putting in, or...
So, I think that, it's my recommendation that red be taken out.
Okay, how about yellow?
Yellow is what I added in, and purple is what I need clarification on.
Okay. Clarification, you need clarification on the purpose and location and placement and temporary business, violation ordinance. Well, that's something I like to bring up in platting, too, is about location. And we talked about it on the phone today about putting, where to put it and where not to put it. Okay, I'm good with that one.
Next, food trucks. Same thing there. Draft legislation received yesterday from the law director. I emailed it this morning to the committee members. Question that I have is, at our 1219 committee meeting, it was stated that the law director, service safety director, and the mayor would get together, go over the food truck legislation, and make sure that the draft is what they wanted. Was that meeting held?
It was not. It was not.
I mean, I read through it, but...
I was gonna say, I don't remember having that meeting.
So, then, I guess my question is, before the committee decides to discuss this, I think it would be well, if you had that meeting, to make sure that what we're looking at is what the three of you are...
Making sure everyone's sent it.
And I also know that back on December the 19th, it was just, you know, suggested that, you know, those three individuals looked this over. I, I know that Fire Chief Schwemle, I'd also had conversations with him on this, and I believe what he was concerned about has been taken care of in here. Same thing with Mike Keefe, our zoning administrator. He's, you know, been involved with this. I don't know if he's another one that should be in on this meeting, so to speak. So, we're going to, or you folks are gonna arrange a meeting with the law director, the mayor, and the service safety director, Mike Keefe.
We'll take your.
Okay.
I have it on my desk here, thank you.
Thank you.
It was on before.
Pardon?
I said, I put it on there before, pardon.
Okay, thank you. I know that, I don't know where that piece is. Ordinance 12 dash 2023, the fire department staffing, that was referred to the finance committee at Tuesday night's council meeting. It was already in the health and safety committee meeting, which, which it was recited, that it was in the health and safety committee meeting, but it was also asked to be put in the finance committee as well. But, I believe in talking with Mr. Myers, we're not sure why it's in finance, and since it is in health and safety, I believe he wanted to talk about that, or the service safety director wanted to talk.
I was gonna ask if you wanted to talk about it in this committee or in finance that originated out of health and safety, and I think that's where the conversation belongs.
Okay.
You're not ready for it yet.
I wasn't prepared to talk about it.
Okay, we can, we can do it next meeting.
Okay, um, I think that's all I have. Let me double check here. Yep, that's all I have. So, next, we'll have our last public participation.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. Couple questions. Snow on sidewalks. I noticed a lady having a very hard time getting up the ramp going up to, on Sandusky Street by Wendy's, and I had another person ask me, "What are the regulations about this?" I looked it up, and it actually is a very, very old ordinance. And I even talked to Mike about it, and that's how we found it out. It's 521.04, duty to keep sidewalks in repair and clean.
What is that?
Huh? 521.04.
Greg, do you have it in front of you?
Yeah, I have it right here.
What's the, I'm just curious, you said it's...
1999.
Okay.
Okay. And it's very big. Me and Mike talked...
You didn't give a timeline on it?
We, it's very big. It originally started in 86, 96. So, basically, it says it has to be cleaned off, but it doesn't give a timeline. But, it does have that you're not allowed to throw snow in the street, you're not allowed to throw snow in parking spaces, or anything like this. But, it also has a fine. Whoever, whoever violates any provision of this section shall be fined not more than $100 a day. Each day continuous violation shall constitute a separate offense. I asked Mike, is there, you know, is there, like, an hour period or anything like that, it has to be cleaned off? Who enforces this? He said, "Not me." So, I'm bringing that to this attention, because most of the downtown businesses do clean off their sidewalks, but some do not. And I've already sent a message to some people for the Disabilities Act to verify if there's anything in there that needs to be addressed also, just because of that, because the Ohio Revised Code section, Jim, if you want this one, too, is 723.011. Says, "The legislative authority of the municipality corporation, in addition to the powers conferred by Section 729.01 to 729.10, includes the erosion code may require by ordinance by imposing suitable penalties or otherwise that the owners and occupants of abutting lots and lands shall keep the sidewalks, curbs, gutters in repair and free of snow or any nuisance." And that was done in 1962, sir. Yeah.
The Ohio Revised Code was on last night.
The Ohio Revised Code was done in 1962. So, that's something I want to bring to this council to see if we can get this fixed and find out who's gonna cite people for not cleaning their sidewalks off.
So, did it say in downtown business districts?
What's that?
Is it in the downtown business?
Yep, it's in the downtown business district, yep.
That's also not in open projects, I'll be happy to refer that as well at our next council meeting.
That's fine.
So, it can be discussed.
The other thing I want to bring up, too, and the law director brought this up in several meetings, many meetings, a few meetings ago, when we were talking about the insurance. Why aren't we regulating and licensing the Uber drivers and everybody else that does considerable, considered, basically, a taxi cab service, okay, under the Ohio Revised Code? Why aren't we regulating them also? If you're gonna regulate one, you have to regulate everybody that does interstate commerce or whatever. I can pull it back up, but I think that needs to be addressed before we go after any more of this about asking taxi companies to have a $1.5 million liability policy, because there's other regulations out there, too, on that, too, in the Ohio Revised Code, to the PUCO. So, that's what I want to bring up, too.
Duly noted.
What's that?
I said duly noted.
Yep, I've been doing some research on that. The other thing I want to bring up, too, because it's under health and safety, recently, the city purchased four cameras to put on the property of the parking, the parking lot in the building out back, at the cost of $15,000 for four cameras.
$1500 each, yes.
No, $15,000 for four. That's over $4,000 a piece, or $3,000 some odd dollars a piece. Four, hang on, 12.
No.
Yeah.
That's not right.
Go ahead.
That's not right.
Okay. So, how much was it, then? Because I couldn't get an answer out of anybody.
$6,500 for four cameras, $10,000 for installation.
Oh, so it's higher, $16,000. I stand corrected.
I stand corrected, because I didn't know about the installation fee.
Yeah, it was, I knew the installation fee was $10,000 bucks.
Duly noted.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Kurt Fankhauser, 616 Prospect. The taxi state law minimum requirement ordinance, or Ohio Revised Code, with that being in the state, state's hands, do we even need an ordinance at all with the city? So, in an effort to not duplicate things unnecessarily, why don't we just totally strip our ordinance and just let it all fall back on the state?
Well, that's up to the committee.
I'm, I'm not a fan of having all these ordinances on the books for no reason and stuff, and that looks like a perfect example of something that can be stripped. Just let the state handle it. Thanks.
Wraith, that off 210 Ethel Street. On the subject of the cameras around Bussars, can I suggest that we have a public, open meeting and invite Mr. Fankhauser and anyone from the public to come up and ask questions, have a Q and A? Would that be something we could do? It's like a, like a town hall type thing, invite Mr. Fankhauser, because I think he's probably got all the answers, obviously.
He's gone.
Well, I guess we can invite him, but I don't know if he'll show. Thank you, just a suggestion. Thanks.
Thanks, Ryan.
Kaylee Lewis, 422 Wallace Avenue. I just want some clarification on the quotes that we got from COSI for the wavelength cameras. So, were they, no, I was under, I was understanding that the cameras out at the parks and stuff were donated, like, the actual cameras were donated, or is that not correct?
From wavelength?
Yes.
Yes, they were.
So, when you got the quotes for cameras, was that because COSI could not just provide the infrastructure, they had to replace the cameras as well? Or was that, had that been run by them?
They, it had not been run by them. I'm not sure that, they don't know if their system can run that.
Okay, so it's just kind of out there hanging until they can come and physically check.
And they had to get the quote in first, so...
Okay, just double checking. Thank you, guys.
Gary Miller. I'm trying to see if Kurt will let me recite it, 616 Prospect with him, but right now, I'm at 800 Rogers Street. My question, or my, I want to address the cameras. These donated cameras, are they now city property? They are ours.
The cameras themselves are.
So, we own the cameras, they're no longer his. He donated us, he cannot take them back.
Cameras only.
Cameras only, right. Okay. So, I wanted to wait until the end, because I knew it was on the agenda. I wanted to see, you guys did, I did give one of my questions, he answered as far as where we're at with getting quotes from something else or whatever. You know, my, my big concern is this, I think it's great that he donated the cameras to us. I think it's not great that he has access to them. If he would have donated the cameras, and if we would have, if they would have came to a server only, but only to the police department or wherever, and not him, that's great, but that's not the way it is. Now, when we had a meeting, it's been a month or two, maybe, when Mr. French was over here from Galleon, trying to find out where the server, you know, where it was going to, Mr. Fankhauser was in the audience then, because it was a committee meeting, you know, not a word out of him. He has, he, he would, could have told us where they were, but he neglected to come up and tell us where they're going to. So, we're gonna get a quote for not only cameras, but we're also gonna get a quote for the infrastructure or whatever it would take for all that. Okay. What about just disabling, taking his cameras down from our, he has them on our property, city property, correct? Why can't we just remove those
Are you asking me that?
I'm asking, am I allowed to get the answers now that we're talking, or should I have asked that first, before you? I thought as long as I was talking, there's something on the agenda that I could get.
Yeah.
So, why don't we just...
You heard you guys on that one.
That's an illustrative question.
First off, don't we have a few, you know, we have a few cameras that are ours, that we own, but we don't have any infrastructure to run them through? Is that, is that the deal, other than through wavelength? In other words, if we were to take down the cameras that he donated, would we still have the cameras that we own? Would they still be functional?
Yes.
So, why don't we just remove, ask him, or we take them down? I mean, I'm sure the city can take them down without, you know, a $10,000 cost or whatever it was to put the other ones. The new cameras that we just bought, too, they were for around this building?
Correct.
So, it had nothing to do with the park or anything like that. Why, why can't we do that?
If I may, it's, ah, biggest thing is, is do you really want to take down some of the cameras at the park system? Because we've had vandalism in the past at the park, and, and the cameras have come into play, and they actually have helped us identify people in the past, past year that have damaged the park. So, it's a catch 22. If, if you would like to have us take the cameras down, we take them down, and if anything's damaged, then we don't know who did it.
I understand that. So, why do, do we need, do we need four cameras in this location? Could we have put a couple cameras? The cameras you put in this location are running, are running off of our infrastructure, they're going off, they're going through wavelength.
Ours.
Ours. So, why couldn't we have done that at the park? I don't know, how, how many cameras do we have at the park?
There's 22 of them total.
Through the whole city?
Yeah.
Through the park?
Through the parks. On the parks.
22 cameras just from the parks?
Yes.
Wow. Why do we need 22 cameras? I mean?
And murals.
Yeah.
And murals. Murals are, murals are called parks as well.
I see, I thought you were just talking maybe.
No, the murals are parks.
Okay. Okay, I, I was just curious, um.
I mean, there again, then we got to worry about if someone damages the murals.
Right.
Or snatches a kid.
Snatches cameras?
The murals aren't our property.
Well, they are at the art park.
Fair enough.
And that's where we've suffered damage in the past.
Okay, so basically right now, we're just waiting to get some quotes on?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
We got, we got the quotes on the cameras, we're just waiting on the quotes on the infrastructure.
Can I ask an additional question?
Sure. Curiosity question. You mentioned that we got vandalism was found or caught or whomever. Were we able to prosecute, recover costs?
I'll take that question. Uh, yes. So, most recently, a juvenile was observed on the cameras at the Schein's Art Park committing vandalism, and he owes us an amount of 500 some odd dollars, and the only reason that we were able to prosecute that was with the help of the cameras.
Is that the only instance that we were able to recover anything financially so far?
It's the most recent.
Is there others?
Not that I know of personally.
So, it's the only one?
I didn't say that.
That's what I'm asking for clarification.
I don't know. I've only been at this job as a prosecutor for like three months.
Yeah. Well, then the other one was, the other incident we had was, is that there was contractors working at Allmiller Park, and there was vandalism by an adult worker, uh, trash in the, the.
Restrooms.
Restrooms at the art, by the park, uh, you know, the, the brick building there at the park by the slych pad. And we were able to identify that person as well. And it was during the daytime.
Did we get financial restitution from that person?
We did not.
Maybe not.
3645 State Route 4. I just had a couple, I guess, comments slash, no, thoughts here. Being someone that's had to work with live emergency events that have been utilized, they utilize cameras to coordinate response efforts, I'm curious to how and why, I, I understand retroactively having these cameras are beneficial, but if we're not going to have a live camera footage now and we're concerned about connecting to live feed in general, why aren't we discussing with COSI, or I would suggest discussing with COSI a local network where that can be accessed if necessary? So, it's recording footage locally to the park, that would be cost-saving measures for installing the camera network, since we've been informed we are not going to have access to the wavelength network as it's being held hostage as part of the negotiation of having the cameras on his network. We would not be able to have it both ways. So, since it's, it would be like a local server, they'd be able to set it up, it would be able to be accessed if there is a crime or an event, but if it's already not being accessed live, then I don't see why we would, it would be necessary to tie back in unless there's a grant or something like, that's been discussed that can be added to provide that later. So, if the cameras are yours, and it might save the city some money to have like a local network to the park that can be accessed, it's recording like a CCTV instead of it being a live access that we've had previously. So, it's my only note on that. I do think it's pretty disappointing that live access isn't brought to the police, whether by their choice or by, you know, the circumstances where the server's not secured and there, there's concerns regarding that. I don't know the whole story of why they don't have it, but, you know, I'm just thinking if there is an actual, like active shooter threat or something downtown, or, you know, there's a threat developing during an event, that it is concerning that, that they would have to somehow send somebody up to administration to access the cameras and be basically giving adjacent reports. There wouldn't be someone down in dispatch that would be able to, to coordinate efforts live. So, that's a concern that I have about the downtown cameras not having live access. I do also want to note that I know mesh server network was mentioned. I believe, and I'm not an expert in the field at all, I'm just actually going off the information that was provided by Kurt previously, that he uses some sort of, let me pull it up here, it was just on my phone, I apologize. One moment. I'll give the right name, I don't want to misspeak here. He uses, currently he uses it for the courthouse or was part of the courthouse installation so they could have arraignments and save on inmate transportation costs. And they coordinated with Motorola to provide a system that has high-speed data transfer up to 20 megabytes aggregate over a 4.9 gigahertz switch system, or spectrum, excuse me. So, assuming that's a similar install to what's out there, are we going to be asking that the infrastructure that's out there be taken down with the cameras, or are we going to let him have that out without a lease?
That's the sheriff's department, that has not.
Not the courthouse itself, I'm talking about out the parks. The infrastructure that he's installed at, like, we don't know what infrastructure's been installed, but he states that there is infrastructure installed out at Allmiller that he uses as part of his mesh network system. Do we know when that was installed or what's out there? What infrastructure's out there that, that he's using?
I don't know.
I don't know about the infrastructure. The infrastructure actually just connects the cameras together.
Yeah, and that would have to, right, and that would have to broadcast.
But I don't know of any antenna or anything like that, but.
Keep broadcasting it somehow, I don't know.
I don't know, it broadcasts it to.
Right.
From the park.
You know, in efforts of not beating a dead horse, this was a concern that I brought back in April, was I just feel like we need to know what is where, because that is a possible revenue for the city if we've been allowing him access with no oversight. So, it could also be considered a benefit if it was installed after his term started, which would be consideration.
And the follow-up on what you had said about the server. Server was, that, that conversation was taking place where he was talking about bringing the server to the city hall, but that conversation hasn't progressed since Tuesday.
Okay. So, currently it's in an undisclosed location that hasn't been confirmed?
Well, undisclosed, it, it doesn't take something to think too much that if the server is at his business.
Yeah.
So. And then a suggestion was made by him that the server would be brought to City Hall.
So, we would have him install the server at City Hall? We wouldn't know that it's like a mirrored server or network? It would be secured?
I told you that as soon as we said that, they were going to say that he'd still have remote access. It doesn't matter, just make a decision.
Just put it here and be done with it. I mean.
Well, I'm, I'm just asking for it to be installed by someone other than him. I'm sure I'm not the only one that feels that way. Okay.
I mean, I don't really understand, be understanding. I mean, yeah, if you.
The person with all the answers just went and hid behind the door and refuses to answer them. We're just have, we've had questions since April and it's not just me. We just want to know and are slightly concerned that the only person who has the answers refuses to answer them.
One thing I would know to do is call COSI, find out how much it would cost to have the server installed and go from there.
Okay.
And there again, right now Tommy's working on trying to get what the costs are for the hard surface, hard wire, whatever.
Hard wire will be extremely expensive, yeah.
For the installation of all the cameras that exist at the park. Only thing that we have to run with right now is if it costs $10,000 to run wire for four cameras, can you imagine what it's going to cost for 22 cameras?
I don't disagree, but I don't think being held hostage to the fact that we have to use the network as a donation and the server and all this other concerns, it shouldn't, I'm not blaming this on you, Bruce, because the person who has the answers and who's the expert in this field refuses to answer the question, so.
It would be a lot more beneficial if you would be here.
And it would be transparent, you know, the, the resolution that was made, so. I appreciate it and I don't want this to come off as a attack to you. It's definitely ambiguous and difficult to understand unless you spend since 2004 installing them, so I just think it's beneficial for everyone to understand or know what's going on. So, thank you for your answering my questions. And I'll stop bugging you.
If we need numbers, we'll see if we can get the numbers, and it'll be up to City Council whether they want to spend the money or not. If they don't want to spend the money, then the cameras should be taken out.
All right, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Logan Beeman, FreeWire. I'm here with a pretty straightforward question, and I've asked and it's never been told to me, but I think we could solve this if we just answered the question, what benefit Mr. Fankhauser stands to gain from this initiative? It's no secret that he's the vendor. That alone raises important questions about conflict of interest. Are we just supposed to accept as a city that this arrangement was made solely in the public interest? Or should we question whether this is another example of self-serving behavior disguised as leadership? Transparency isn't just a buzzword, it's the cornerstone of good governance. The residents of the city deserve more than vague assurances and closed-door decisions. If this project truly benefits the public, let's see the receipts, both figuratively and literally. What does he stand to gain? Why are, why is wavelength, wavelength the best choice for the cameras? Is it purely a financial thing? It's not an accusation, just a demand for accountability. I, I'm not alone in thinking that it's hypocritical in nature to run on solely transparency and then not answer questions, so. I just think if we had the answer, answered that one single question, it would help with everything else, so. That's it.
Did she want to say something, Kevin?
No, ma'am.
Any other public participation?
Sorry, I forgot to ask it something. Clarissa Slater, 36, 35, or 3645 State Route 4. What, what's are like the guidelines for calling a public hearing for, for, for a issue? Is there like a policy? I don't know, I don't know.
If I could answer, there's, there's different policies based on the reason, like for planning, you know, we are required to announce it and have a certain number of days and all that. In this instance, I believe what Mr. Thedoff was asking for was more of a, a town hall. So, at that point, anybody could schedule a time and a place and say, come. I don't think there's any requirements to that.
And my question, do we, if we have a town hall meeting, do we want to have it after we have all information as to what costs it'll be for cameras and infrastructure and all?
We might be able to answer questions that way instead of just listening to questions, so. I'd say wait until we get all the information.
I agree that'd be beneficial.
Pardon?
I agree, that would be beneficial to have, you guys have all the information.
So, with that, I guess my question to the administration would be, you know, we've, we've been working on this, or I should say, the administration's been working on this for a long time, is when are we going to?
Is there a way that, that you could have a resolution or something? Maybe, I don't know, instead of just relying on COSI, it seems as though COSI, I think we need more than one, one bit or one, one person out there.
Are you not checking with, this is COSI, are you not checking with Spectrum, I thought?
That's for internet.
Oh, Spectrum's internet?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
This is for actually hardwiring the cameras.
Okay. So, what, when you made the comment about us doing a resolution?
Or, or somewhere to authorize us to go out to bids and, and.
I don't think we want you to go out to bid. I think we want you to get quotes, which is two different things.
Yeah, we need quotes.
All right, well.
You can do that on your own.
We were told that this, that was administrative till we knew that there were numbers that were bigger.
All right, but one, I don't, okay.
Get as many quotes as you want from whoever you want.
I see.
I do have a follow-up. I know I, I believe the night that we, there was another citizen came up and asked questions about wavelength and we weren't getting questions answered, I, I think I was the one that asked that was referred to health and safety and you guys agreed to refer it. In my intent, and I'll have to go back and listen to how I said it, my intent was that if, I mean, I don't know if a situation like this will ever happen again, but if there's ever a situation where donation of anything, whether it be internet or other controversies that have come up about donation, that there be some sort of agreement, legislation done, I feel like that's kind of been, like the topic has been derailed from that. I really think that'd just be beneficial to have everybody on the same page of what donations are and that there's no, no financial benefit, whether that be done through like a private CPA or some, I think that was my thought process when talking to a few of you, and I know that's kind of been diverted, but this would maybe cut out and create that transparency for the future, if there's ever any donations from a city official or adjacent that may cause a conflict of interest, that they're still able to do the good for the city, but it'd also be the terms are laid out, so if citizens do have questions, we know what's being donated, how, and that it's been checked by somebody, that they're not writing it off on taxes or something, so that way it's just all.
And is this a topic that we would need to have referred to the committee? Because I don't believe it's on open projects.
It would have to be referred.
Okay, all right, yeah. So, that, that was one thing, I wasn't sure how that was referred out since it was only regarding wavelength.
So, you're talking about one piece of legislation that's going to cover all donations?
Yeah, a donation legislation that basically just lays out. If, if the person is a, a public official.
Just as a public official.
A public official donation, that way there is transparent, and then if anything ever comes out from an ethics, you guys have a form to hand them and say, hey, you're asking questions, here's our agreement. If you find anything outside of this agreement, then that's, you know, whatever, so.
I donated a hundred bucks to the pool last year, so that would fall under that, right?
I mean, they would just report it, and if you're not writing it off on taxes, I don't know if we want to do a dollar amount that would make it worthwhile. I guess that's up to you guys, but probably need to wait.
Mr., do you understand that, or?
I think I, I think I understand it.
I don't want you to break any rules about talking about it tonight, though, I just.
I think I understand what she's saying.
Yeah, I'm a bad boy.
Real quick, won't take very long. I just want to say all of this would, could be avoided if Mr. Fankhauser would just answer some questions. He's all about transparency and we just need a few questions answered. That's all. Thank you.
Any more public participation?
Gary Miller, 100 Rogers, Ray just stole my thunder there with his comment. That's what I was going to say. I think the town hall or whatever meeting to discuss it is a great idea, but the person that has all the answers could have talked about it many times when he was out here, and he, I don't think he's going to come and answer what we want to be doing, so. But it is a great idea.
But if I'm understanding, before we even go to thinking of scheduling a town hall meeting, we want to have. Figures from administration of costs and what have you.
Yeah, from, from, from the parks to here on everything.
I think that sounds great and all, but I think in the meantime, people out here want some answers and they want them soon. I mean, nothing against anybody up here, but things tend to drag out, and we want some answers now.
But then my concern's going to be, we go ahead and schedule a town hall meeting and we invite Mr. Fankhauser. and we invite Mr. Fankhauser and if he chooses not to come...
We have to make our own assumptions and go, go by the numbers that we have.
What does that tell you? He will not answer simple questions. What does that, what does that tell you? Something, something's fishy. Obviously, you got, the whole town's concerned about it. I mean, it's great that he's donating all this and saving us all this money and everything. That's, that's awesome. Just come and answer some questions. What's he hiding?
Adrian Kemery, 725 South Spring. Couple points, like what he said. What's he hiding? Even if he's not hiding anything, I don't understand. If I, if I offered something to the city and you guys said, "Hey, I don't want your donation," I'd say, "Okay, you know, that's it. I'll take them and leave." I don't understand if he's not benefiting in any way, shape, or form and so many people are against it and fighting for it, why is he digging in his heels? There has to be a reason. We don't know what that reason is, but there has to be a reason. Nobody would kick and scream and hold down what they want the way that it is if there wasn't a reason behind it. So, if he's benefiting in no way, shape, or form, then I feel the pure benefit is because he can get on his phone and he can look at any camera at any time. He has it saved. I guarantee he has facial recognition and he can have folders of anybody he wants. He's made it obvious that he likes to keep things for many years and bring them up later on. He's pulled police reports and waited seven or eight months to hand them off to someone else to present as evidence. So, with that kind of history, I just don't trust that person having everybody's information. Do I understand? Yes, it's public. Anybody can be recorded at any time, but I don't have all the parks 24/7 for the last two years that I can pull up and show someone. I don't agree, I don't agree with that. The other question is if we're having people coming in and giving quotes, can they go out and verify what is out there? I think, and you know much more about this than I do, but I think the point Chris was trying to make is, do his cameras serve a purpose other than just cameras? He says he has a mesh network that he's built and it has all this infrastructure and costs behind it. If the cameras weren't on, is the infrastructure itself, self, still helping his business? Helping him have better service to his other customers? If so, that does serve a profit for him as well. It makes his business better. He can have more customers. He can service his customers faster and charge more for it. That is a, that could be potentially a financial gain. Yes. But if we're having someone come out and give quotes, can we have them go out and verify what's actually up there? And say, "Yes, he could essentially be broadcasting or bettering his business by what he has up here with this camera." It doesn't just serve to bounce this camera off this camera or this camera to his server. It is, as he has described it in the past, a mesh network that works together. Because if he's doing that, that is an ethics violation. He should not be profiting from it. When I asked someone, how do we know he's not taking a tax deduction? He may not be, but in 2022, when it was brought up and talked about, he wanted to get a value of the quote that we guys, that you were getting from someone else because he wanted to know what the value of his donation would be. So, maybe he's not now in 2024, but in 2022, he was questioning what that value is and what his tax write-off could be. When I asked how we know he's not doing that, I was told, "That's not our problem." I'm generalizing this quote. It could be wrong. "That's not our problem. That's the IRS's problem." Okay, but we don't know what he files. So, in light of what has been brought up about other places, let's see the financials. Show us that you're not writing that off. If you want the free business, show us that it's not being written off. Thank you.
AV Frizz, Frizzle Passage. I was just going to comment because I feel like you guys are being trapped by Mr. Fankhauser's assumption that you're ignorant on the matter. I, I say this to almost everyone on this side of the rail. The infrastructure backbone that Mr. Fankhauser is talking about is simply an internet connection. It's not a complex device that only he holds the key to. It's just having a connection to the internet. And all you need is a camera connected to the internet. If you have internet at the park, you already have the backbone. You don't need any of his equipment. If you would like, I could have a private meeting with anyone in charge of the quotes, but within 20 seconds, I found an available system that doesn't even require internet, a seven-camera system with a three-mile range that is wireless for under $3,000. So, I would be happy to provide you with a list of equipment that is equitable to any of the Wavelength stuff that requires none of this ethics concerns or any of that. It's a simple connection. So, I just wanted to kind of pull the curtain back that there is no backbone magical thing that only he has the access to. He simply means he's connecting to the internet. So, if we're not relying on his Wavelength wireless internet for the cameras, that's all we need. So, when you say the spectrum is just the internet, the internet is the backbone. So, all you need is an internet connection at the park. And if you have an internet connection, you don't even need this $2,000 seven-camera system. All you need is a Wi-Fi camera. Those are less than $100 per camera. So, I would say as a, as a council, as a committee, as administration, I would recommend removal of the entire Wavelength camera system because it's heavily overpriced and it's old, it's old technology. Wavelength is not broadband spectrum, the same, the same type of internet. He uses a proprietary, unlicensed, limited license wireless connection to get onto his internet. All you need is to connect to an internet, not to Wavelength internet, internet. So, I'll email you all with an opening to set up a meeting, but it would be easy to provide these numbers for such a simple service. Thank you.
One more time.
This is a follow-up to that. The letter that was sent, the reason why many of us, and maybe sometimes I have this criticism for you, Vicky, and I tend to do it myself. I'm so focused microscopically and not giving the macroscopic view for people. But what he had stated at the infrastructure, he stated that the infrastructure would not be able to be utilized or accessed at the park if we didn't use his cameras and his network. That was the original email or the letter that was sent to council. Basically, what he's saying is that he will pull Wavelength internet if the cameras aren't allowed to be used at the park. So, that's what I wanted to bring that full circle was that the, basically he was saying the internet and the cameras are a two-for-one deal and you can't separate them, at least the correspondence that was received previously. So, that's all. Thank you. Sorry.
Gary, this is it.
Gary Miller, Hunter Rogers. I know we're in a financial crunch with the city. I myself would be willing to donate to a fund for cameras if we do go that route. And I'm sure a lot of other people might do that also because we had that happen with the pool. So, if you get us a quote, I would be willing to donate to help pay for that. Thank you.
Okay, now, the question that I have is, I know, you know, we've, are talking about that, are talking about this here at our Health and Safety Committee meeting. But the bottom line is, we really don't have any say. Am I correct that it's the administration that has the say on pull them, keep them?
Correct.
Now, I have a question.
Shoot.
However, the administration is only authorized to spend so much before they come to council for anything.
That's $75,000, yeah.
Which is why they were getting the figures because the numbers that were being thrown out were way over for, for putting that whole system. So...
Correct.
That's why we've been waiting for numbers and that's why it's still sitting here because we don't know whether or not we would be involved. But at this point, it's not us, right?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, what? We're going to be, we're sitting here waning for more figures?
Correct.
Okay.
Wes Eva.
Um, I forgot to mention something earlier. Miranda, have you heard back from Alyssa downstairs in the law director's office? You had sent an email to her about if Floyd Farmer, Steve Pfeiffer, and Ron Boers were willing to be reappointed to their public maintenance or property maintenance appeals board. Have you heard back from her?
I called her yesterday, actually. And she called me back this morning and said that she's only heard back from, and I can't quote for sure which one it was, but has only heard back from one of them out of the three.
So, is she going to be contacting them?
She's been contacting them and leaving them messages, trying to get their approval or disapproval of wanting another term, yes.
Okay, then we'll just wait till, and I'm assuming she'll be getting back with you. And then when she gets back with you, you'll get back with me.
Absolutely.
Sounds good. All right. I'm not going to ask for any more public participation. I'm going to adjourn. If I can do this right. 7:22 PM. Meeting adjourned.
Public Lands and Buildings Committee, January 9th, 2025.
Calling the Public Lands and Buildings Committee. Meeting to order at 7:24 PM. Members present Zion Hickman, Christopher Moritz, Kevin Myers, and Sierra and Sherrod Chair. First on the agenda, we have public participation.
Kirk Fankhauser, 616 Prospect Street. The properties that the city's looking to sell, I definitely think they need to sell as many as they can. Specifically, one reason being is so that we don't get caught up mowing them this summer with these new Afsmi pay rates. It looks like we're up there like 30 bucks an hour now. So, mowing of those properties at that rate would be, in my opinion, a waste of money. Also, we, we need this new roof on City Hall. That's $400,000. We need that other $200,000 above and beyond with the suspected $100,000 donation for that airport, our share, cost share grant, you know, a couple, a couple hundred more thousand. That, that right there is over $600,000 that we need. And I don't think we're going to get enough selling the North End Fire Station alone, plus those other two properties behind Wendy's. So, that puts us in a situation. And we, we can't lose this airport grant. We have to get that grant. So, that's going to, you know, if we sell the North End Fire Station, that's going to put that money towards the airport grant, I'm assuming. But then it comes back to where's this $400,000 coming for City Hall? I think we're probably going to have to sell the pines in order to come up with that much money to get this roof replaced. So, I mean, I'd, I'd hate to see, you know, the roof continue to deteriorate to the point where it ends up costing more money. So, we need to move on this now. It'd be nice if you guys could get all these properties together and get them all listed in one big auction with like right, whoever the auctioneers are, so they could just do this whole thing, one big shot, and get rid of this stuff rather than piecemeal on it here and there. But that's the only thing I got.
Do we have any more public participation? Okay, seeing none. The donation of the YMCA building is next on the list. Do we have any information about this?
Yes. The, Bruce Churka approached me as a citizen and asked this to be referred. He wants to donate to this, this to the city since we're in the need of properties to sell or in the alternative, keep it and use it for the fireplace.
Does anybody have anything about this? Anybody else? Comments? Thoughts?
No, we haven't comments. I don't know.
Okay, so there's nothing else for discussion for that right now? All right, so then let's move on to American Tower lease. What do we have on that?
American Tower reached out to us and they want to amend the current lease and add in seven additional five-year renewal terms. So, they want to extend the automatic renewal for an additional 35 years for a lump sum payment of a proposed $5,000.
So, at some point, somebody mentioned that that might need to go back out to bid. Is that correct or incorrect?
Correct. It's got to go back out to bid.
So, that lump sum money means nothing because we don't know what the bids would be?
Maybe you can set the minimum. The only one who's going to be able to bid on it with any practicality is American Tower.
Okay. That was my next question. Is it because all of their equipment is already on it?
Correct.
Was American Tower the ones that wanted to enlarge it as well?
They didn't mention any of that.
Somebody brought it to us. I think it was you.
No, it was before Brian.
Okay. Somebody brought it to us that they wanted additional space over there.
Which also, we, we would have to take it out to bid. So, if they were wanting to enlarge it, that'd be another thing that they would have to add to their bid.
Correct. That would have to go up to bid and that would be anybody's game.
So, we need to know who it was that was wanting, somebody having this tower wanted to make it bigger.
American Tower. So, they're, they're just leasing the space that their tower sits on, correct?
Correct.
And they want to renew the lease for that space for 35 years at a grand total of $5,000.
$5,000 total?
Well, they don't want to renew it. They want to amend it and extend it to add so, for a grand total of $5,000.
So, for 35 more years, we're only going to get $5,000 more?
That's their proposal. Don't shoot the messenger.
And what, what is it right now?
Uh, so currently...
Is it monthly right now?
It is monthly. There...
Talk about that.
No, 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 that's...
This is term...
While you're looking at it...
This is a long contract.
Can somebody do some research to find out what the, the normal average going rate is for that? I mean, is that the, the deal that everybody's getting that has a tower somewhere or?
Yeah, before we, we really look at anything, I mean, we should probably put it off for bid, even if it's, they're the only ones that could actually end up benefiting.
Because if you say that we can put it out to bid and we can set a minimum, you know, if they're paying other places...
More.
Yeah. And I don't even know. I mean, maybe, maybe that's the going rate. I don't know.
All right. So, the annual rent of $12,000 is being paid to lease that area.
Okay, so it's...
And every five years, the, there's an automatic renewal and they're requesting to extend that to an additional seven. And every contract renewal, it goes up 15%.
Wait, so we're going from $12,000 annually to 35 years for $5,000? Or they want us to pay us $5,000 to be allowed to continue on?
They're willing to give us, to buy, they're willing to buy the additional seven extensions for $5,000.
So, they'd still do a monthly payment and we'd just get $5,000 for being nice enough to let them do it?
Correct.
So, we'd still be in the $12,000 plus 5% annually?
Plus 15% per contract renewal.
So, every five years?
Every five years. Because I'm like, $5,000 for 35 years is kind of the biggest ripoff I've ever heard of in my life. And so, this wasn't, this legitimately did not sound like a good deal. But so they want to pay us $5,000 to allow them...
The, the $12,000 annual rent, subject to the 15% increase per renewal period, stays the same. The only thing that's changing is they're getting an additional seven five-year extensions.
So, basically what they're asking for is whatever the current lease, when it expires, they're just asking that that timeframe of when it expires goes way off into the future.
Technically, yes. That's, that's the simplest way to put it.
So, I guess I'm just trying to make this in layman's terms. So, they don't want to, probably they don't want to invest money and put more equipment on something that they may not have for a great length of time.
Exactly. Exactly.
So they want to secure the rights to that for a longer period of time so that they can invest in it properly.
Correct.
Do you have an opinion on what we should do?
Who, me?
You.
Uh, I think that giving them, or putting it out to bid is something that we legally have to do. I think that having them be the only bidder is, I also think the only thing that can legally happen, because they are subject to the contract, and nobody else can bid to extend the contract.
But they, somebody else could bid to start the contract at the end of theirs. Instead of it being extended, it would be...
It wouldn't be an extension of their contract.
Right.
Because they're not, they're, they're no, there's not, they aren't a third-party beneficiary to this contract. So, well, functionally, we do have to send it out for bid. They're the only functional bidder. So if you want to set it out for bid for a minimum of whatever they're offering, or if you want to demand a higher price, you could do that.
Is there a way to, I don't know where you would check, you know, to check what the going rate is at other municipalities that are doing this, or other private individual buildings?
Yeah, because I'd like to know too.
I mean, there's towers everywhere. I just don't know how do you, how you fight out who's...
What they're actually paying.
Who's got what deals, but...
Call local mayors or service directors or...
Make some phone calls.
I mean, I'd like to have a comparison before we agree to a dollar amount.
And how's, yeah, they don't need it right now, right?
Correct.
Okay.
That's gonna ask me.
And since, it'd be probably good to ask them if they were still, if they were the ones that had wanted to enlarge it, because if so, that would have to be a part of this. They'd have to get permission to get it...
That was not in their current request. I'm sure if that's something they want to do down the line, they will also bring that, but that has nothing to do with it as of today.
It's a principle.
Too old to go. I don't remember. I can't remember what it was either. I was trying to think if it was AT&amp;T or who it was, but I knew somebody was interested in it at one time last year.
Well, as it stands, all the renewals that are running, not, none of us are gonna be here on this council or in this job when it expires and goes out to bid for a new tower. So...
But it has nothing to do with whether or not we'll be here. It's whether or not we completely screw the city because they lowballed us and we fell for it. I mean...
That's all. I just want to do due diligence and just...
Yeah. This is, we're here for the city. It's not anything about saving face. It's not about, it's what we can do to make sure that we're not kicking a can down the road that's making things harder for everybody later.
Okay, so...
I want to make sure that it's done right.
The only thing that would be changing is that they have more contract renewals subject to the 15% increase.
Right. But what if they already lowballed us?
I was gonna say, so if you want to increase the $12,000 per year, annual total, $1,000 a month, plus 15% per contract negotiation, uh, you would just say, no, we're not gonna extend the contract. We're not gonna give you more renewals. Let the contract expire, and then whoever down the road wants to renegotiate that for a higher price can do that.
Well, that's what I'm saying. That's why we need to find out numbers. Like, are they already lowballing us? Is this something we should totally not look into because it'd be stupid? Or is it something fair?
And for timeline, this agreement was signed in 2011.
Yeah.
Let's just, let's just, uh...
$12,000 seems like, that even seems small now.
Table it and get more information.
Until we can get to the numbers, just so we know we're making a good decision or not.
I thought so too. Do we need to make a motion to table it, or are we good because we discussed it?
I mean, if I'm gonna make phone calls, I would suggest tabling it. Motion to table.
That was my question. So we have a motion from Mr. Myers.
Second.
Second from Mr. Hickman. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, the sale of public lands and city property. Did everybody get a full list?
I've got it written down on my paper.
It's buried in there somewhere.
Actually, these are from the... I know we already had some drawn up for the properties. I thought it was three.
No. There was just two of them that was passed Tuesday.
Oh, okay. Two of them that were passed, and one that we need to still rework.
Yeah.
Um, did we get that reworked, or do we still need to bring that the next time?
Brandon?
I'm sorry, what?
The reworked property. Did you get it done? The legislation?
The fire station.
For the fire station?
Yes, I did.
247.
So two of them have been voted on already. The fire station, did, were you, you got it done? We had all the changes stated at the council meeting.
Correct.
But I know it had come back to committee, so we have to send that back to council. And then the other properties, there's a Wallace Avenue and a High Street and an East Warren Street that were listed.
So those are the only three properties of all the stuff that we own that have been deemed not needed or able to be disposed of?
At this time, the, the ones that Ms. Sherick was speaking about is all from a FEMA project that came through town. So we couldn't do anything on Russell Avenue and those, in the, on Woodlawn. And then the other one...
Is there a length of time that we have to hold this before we can sell those?
It's, it's always public land. It becomes public land forever.
If I can... And that property on Russell, the possibility is, is we're trying to get the water out of Buffalo Sewer, and so the proposal has been to make that a retention basin down on Russell.
And other properties that we may have had on a list before are suddenly county properties, as I was informed. I'm not sure how that works. Very confused. But the whole list we had before that you and I had seen, it's MIA.
Yeah. And I don't have any information in front of me, but like Mike Keith, one day I recall, he pulled up and showed me where Poplar Street crosses over Mary and turns, you know, to, before it goes across the bridge, there's a little section on the, the right side of the road there. It's just a little triangle. You know, things like that. And he said, well, that could be given to the neighbor, you know, because we're, we're sending somebody, you know, out there to mow every week. Things like that. I guess I'm, and it probably doesn't have an address, but...
To what Kurt said, I think we're sending people out to mow a lot of stuff. And I just want to make sure that anything that, there's not a need for us to keep, that we're not keeping. Has anybody got a broker's opinion on these other three on the list yet?
I've not.
Can I request that you guys do that in similar fashion to the other properties we've disposed of?
And then Ms. Sherick, do we, I'm assuming on the 606 North Sandusky, we just have to request that draft legislation get presented, then moved on to full council? Sure. I noticed that one of the 2024s wasn't changed. I forgot to, I missed that. But other than that, it should be ready to go. But I see Vicki has questions and comments. Go for it, Vicki.
Come on up, Vicki.
Vicki Deschon, 1108 Hillcrest Drive. On the draft for the North End Fire Station, you know, when I talked on Tuesday, where it says be it resolved by the Council of the City of Bussaras, we had a majority, and that needed to be changed to two-thirds. You've put two-thirds in there, but you didn't take out majority.
So it's still a majority.
Pardon?
It's still a majority.
Then my question would be, why did you not do that then on the other two pieces? For the Lot 1 and the Lot 2 surrounding Wendy's? I mean, they're, it's not consistent with how the other pieces were done.
Because I am not a robot. And I write these myself, and there's going to be some stylistic differences each time.
Okay. I'm just bringing it up.
Sure.
Um, under Section 1, where I brought up the fact that, well, your Section 1, you had authorized and directed, which that's typically how we always did it. We'd just say, you're authorized and directed. I notice, and that's fine, because you're the law director, that you're now breaking it down. You do an A that says, okay, you're authorized to advertise. Then you do a B that says you're off, or you're directed to advertise. Understand? However, under Section 1, Section 1B, you're authorizing to advertise, and you've already authorized to advertise in A.
Same. A and B are the same.
So B needs to say directed to advertise. Or that's what I'm suggesting.
Well, yeah, see if I directed to...
Yeah. You could just get rid of B and change A to say authorized and directed.
But if he does that, then he needs to change Section 2 and Section 3 and do the same thing.
Yeah, you're right. I was gonna say, it's right everywhere else.
Yeah, you got directed. I see that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with her, just changing one B to directed.
Then on Section 4, and you may have already, by your answer you gave before, you have that this clerk, or that the clerk is hereby directed to publish this legislation pursuant to law. That wasn't in the draft for Tuesday night that I made suggested revisions to. And it's not in the ones for Lot 1 and Lot 2. But I'm assuming you're gonna say you just...
Sure.
Okay.
It's just what I put in this one. It doesn't really change the validity of it.
No, it doesn't. It's just...
Except we pay by the word to publish them.
And you've pointed out that where it's passed, that needs to be 25 rather than 24.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So with these corrections, did we have any motions to go with them?
I'll make that motion.
To, to send that back to full council as corrected?
To send back to full council as corrected.
I'll second that.
Are we having a motion and a second? A motion from Mr. Hickman, a second from Mr. Moritz. All in favor of sending this piece of legislation back to full council?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Nope. That passes. Awesome. And we're getting more information about the other public lands. So... Do we have anything on open projects we need to talk about this evening? Okay. Now we're to public participation.
Kurt Fankhauser, 616 Prospect Street. I just want to ask what happened with the donation of the YMCA to the night? Did anything happen with it? Okay, so the last, I don't remember exactly which meeting, but Mr. Rossington showed up. He's a neighbor directly, he owns property directly beside that. He said he was in favor of the city acquiring it and just sitting on it, holding it. If, if the city was to acquire that property right now, what that will do is, that will give the administration the ability to go out and seek grants for demolition, possibly adding on to the existing building. So you guys are putting a crutch by not accepting that property right now, and the ability to do something with it. Now, I know everybody's got their heart on, let's, let's have all new public safety infrastructure for, you know, let's have a new fire station building. Let's, let's build it down at Kime Lumber. But we have to look at the reality of what the citizens of Bussaras can afford, and we're going to be facing a $60 million wastewater treatment plant rehab. There's not going, the citizens of this town are barely going to be able to afford that, let alone a 12, 15 million dollar fire station, brand-new fire station up at the Kime Lumber property. This acquisition of the YMCA makes sense for what the citizens can afford. Now, you can just sit there and stare at the floor, Aaron, and not look at me while I'm addressing this committee.
If you are going to attack people, you will be asked to leave the podium. We are listening to what you have to say.
I know...
Other than that, do not attack people. Thank you.
I know that most of the committee here probably is taking the advice of Mr. Myers, since he has served in the EMS industry all a significant portion of his career. And he probably really has pushed you guys to, let's get the new fire station. Let's get the new fire station. But we can't afford it. We, we have to do what's smart and wise with the tax money that we have.
Mr. Fankhauser, do you have a point here? Because right now you're speculating, and people are having crazy conversations behind your back, and who knows what else. Nobody's talked about it.
I just...
Can you please?
I just was out in the hallway for 45 minutes while you guys were talking about all kinds of crazy camera stuff.
Okay. Did you get to your point?
Did you answer it?
Did you get to your point?
No.
All right. That's what we asked you to do.
I, I'm not taking up that much time. You know, we have a levy, we had a levy for the police and the fire that just tanked in November. You think you're gonna put a new station on that ballot ever? Give a $15 million station out of the wallets of people in this town? No. You guys are crazy. You, you guys are actually crazy.
Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. A side note to this. I thought it was council's rules. When you come up to speak, you have to give your address. Okay? So if those are the rules, we must follow the rules. Thank you. Moving on. So, so the American Lease Tower, okay? I kind of agree with you guys. But is that company selling space on that tower also? Are they benefiting from other people on that tower? Those are some questions you need to ask. Okay?
Do you have knowledge of that, or you're just asking that?
I'm asking that. So you're, you're asking about other stuff. Why aren't we asking the question, do they rent space on that tower? And are they benefiting from the lease and trying to get, you know, this as low as possible? And they're actually making profiting off this lease off the city. That's a good question to ask.
Can I interrupt you real quick before I lose my thought on this? Can you, when you look into that, can you also find out, are, you know, not only are they leasing space out, but does the current contact we have with them allow for that? Thanks.
Mm-hmm. Okay, the second thing is the sale of public lands and buildings. I do applaud Erin for her diligence about trying to list, get all the list of the properties. But however, I don't see a list of all city properties. There's other properties that could be sold too. I mean, there should be a complete list of every city property that the city owns on a list for people to look at as a potential sell. Okay? You can't pick and choose what you want to sell. But I think there should be a comprehensive list of all city properties, including City Hall, fire stations, or whatever, but a comprehensive list so the public can see this. But a comprehensive list, so the public can see this of what actually the city does own. I know they own farmland. I know they own land down on Route 4. Okay? So, my thing is, if we had a comprehensive list of all city properties that could be sold. Okay? Not just picking and choosing the ones you want to sell, but everything.
So, to correct that, you want a full comprehensive list and then a list to show what could be sold?
I want a complete list of all city properties.
Because some things cannot be sold no matter what.
Right, I understand that.
But having a full comprehensive list was your number one.
To, to Mr. White's point, again, before I lose my train of thought, can we request that you put together an entire list of every property we own with side notes as to why we can't dispose of certain ones? And that way, I think that gives us and people that are asking, you know, knowledge of that.
So, my other question too, since the Safety Service Director here. So, the property at 112 Wiley Street. Why is that being taken off? I mean, is there an issue or problem that should be, should have been addressed here to let people know why it can't be sold?
Sure, we'll put it on that list.
Okay.
I, I don't remember the address of, I think there's a sewer line going through that one, but I don't, I don't know that for sure.
But we have to still, we still have to mow it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
But there, there's a sewer system that goes through it. And we don't want to relinquish that because you can't build on top of a main sewer system that goes east and west through there.
Correct. I understand that. It just, it wasn't clarified of what...
As to why?
As to why. I mean, if we want to know everything, we should be able to know what the reason is for. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Amy Frizzell, Frizzell Passage, Bucyrus, Ohio. I just want to save everybody some time again. The list of properties that was just requested, I don't know if you guys are aware of this or if our audience members requesting it are. But if you go to the ccauditor.crawford.co.org website, which is our county website, the commonly referred to as hamburger menu, has an option to click the GIS Property Search Map. And you can go there and type in city of Bucyrus. And it will instantly show you all 232 properties owned by the city of Bucyrus, along with a map that highlights them all. So, maybe save some time, you can just go right there. That'll show you every property we have. Maybe you could start there and then just cross them out in red, like, we need this one.
That's why I was asking for them to tell us why we can't get rid of certain ones, like with the sewer and such, yeah.
I just thought I'd save everybody, including audience members, some time.
Way to steal my thunder.
You just have to search.
Give me your hand. Way to steal my thunder and divulge an attorney secret.
It's not a secret website.
No, but nobody knows how to use it.
Adrian Camery, 725 South Spring Street. I guess I want to say, I applaud you guys for not making a rash decision tonight on the acceptance of a piece of property. Because I think you guys need to do your due diligence of what that property could potentially cost the city of Bucyrus. They're getting upset about $30 an hour to mow a piece of property over the summer. But how do we know that a grant is going to be secured? We, that's not a guarantee. I actually called a, and it's a company that the city has used in the past for some remediation of, oh, my mind just went blank.
I think you were gonna say asbestos.
Thank you. I called an asbestos remediation company that has divulged that they have been used by the city of Bucyrus previously. And they clarified that they have not been contacted on this one. But we have no idea how much even that could cost. It could be minimal if nothing tests positive. But there's, with that age of building, a lot of stuff could test positive. The swimming, the old swimming pool itself could test positive. So, there's a lot of cost to the demo, and we don't know that we're guaranteed that. Also, if we're not going to, to demo it for sure, is it already winterized? I don't...
There's heat on there.
Okay.
I'm paying for electricity and natural gas. It's heated.
Okay. I mean, there is going to be costs, there's always costs, obviously, I mean, you know as, as the owner. But I'm saying for the city, there's gonna be costs. Once you become the owner, then the city becomes responsible for that. Heat, minimal water, whatever, taxes, I don't know how all that works. But I think you guys do need to do your due diligence to see what you guys want to actually do with that property, whether it is tear down, whether to just keep it. Something was said about selling it. I mean, if there's another prospective buyer out there, then that's maybe a possibility. But I do understand that the fire department is crowded. I went down there, I spent an afternoon, walked through with them. I started asking what they actually need. And I was told by the chief that I was the first person that ever even asked him that. So, I don't know what a new building would cost, but a lot of times, trying to make an old building work the way you want it to, and then potentially try, trying to tie another old building in, or taking it down to level, we don't know what that cost would be, and then rebuilding, it's not gonna be super cheap. I don't know, you know, I think a lot of numbers were thrown out by Kurt the day that he brought it out in the open that this was being considered. I don't know if there's been any actual estimates given. But like I said, it took me an afternoon to know that we could have anywhere from $10,000 to $100,000 on the cost of asbestos removal alone. So, I appreciate you guys not making a rash decision tonight. And I hope you guys, or someone's gonna be doing some due diligence to look into what the cost would be. Thank you.
Do I have to say my name and address again?
Yes, sir. Everybody else has.
Okay, Kurt Fankhauser, 616 Prospect. I know I've said in the past, only come up here once, but I noticed earlier tonight, a bunch of people came back up a bunch of times. But the thing you said about the secret discussions and stuff from Mr. Myers, Mr. Myers has told me himself that he wants to see a new station someday built on that Kime Lumber property. So that's not a made-up thing. That is real, that he wants that for the city. Okay? And I have a question for you, Madam Chairman. Have you ever even owned property?
Kurt, my personal anything is none of your business. If you don't know what I've owned, it's not your business. If you don't know what I haven't owned, it's not your business. You don't need to know what cars, what houses, what properties, what businesses that I have ever had. But what I do know is you've made a lot of assumptions up here tonight and done an attack, and I've asked you to stop. And the first thing you want to do is try to come at me with a personal question. Are you done with what is necessary for this meeting?
I am ready for this meeting to be over.
Okay. Do we have any other public participation? Seeing none, I am adjourning public lands and buildings at 8:01 PM.
2025? Plating mem, plating, plating committee will come together at 8:05. Members Aaron Sharick, Kevin Myers, Vicki DeShawn, James Meachair. Public participation. I've been blessed once again. Okay, I need approval for the minutes of the December 19th, 2024 Regular Plating Committee Meeting.
I have suggested revisions.
They haven't been done yet?
Pardon?
They haven't been done? You had suggested revisions?
To the draft minutes, yes. So, I'm wondering if we'll do what we did. And I will send to Miranda the revisions, my suggested revisions to the minutes.
All right, do we want to...
So I'll make a motion to table those minutes until the next time?
Okay.
Thank you. Motion by Aaron, Myers second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 So we're gonna hold the minutes. BCO Chapter 905 Sidewalks. How'd you like that new revision?
Okay.
I do see red pen on it, just to tell you that.
Okay, first off... Aaron, have, have you looked at this 905.01 on the sidewalk, his revisions? The draft?
Uh huh.
Okay.
That means no.
I just want to make sure, because I'm reading this, and I think it's confusing. At least it's confusing to me. What we're wanting this section to say is that, first off, the public can go to the administration to report that a sidewalk needs to be repaired or constructed. At that time, then, the administration will have this sidewalk matter investigated. The public can also go to council, because the law director said we can't say that they can't go to council.
But at that point in time, we would still need to have it investigated.
Right, they'll go to council, they'll report a sidewalk to be repaired or constructed. Then council will refer the sidewalk to the administration. At which time, the administration will then have the sidewalk investigated. Next, the administration can itself identify the sidewalks that they feel need to be repaired or constructed. And they will have those sidewalks, or that sidewalk, investigated. Once the sidewalks, all sidewalks, whether it's the public that says there's a problem or the administration says there's a problem, once they've all been investigated, the administration then makes it known to council. This is the list of sidewalks that need to be addressed. Council then is going to refer that list to the appropriate committee. Then, the appropriate committee will request, and council will pass a resolution which identifies the sidewalks to be repaired or constructed. And then, the clerk or their designee will cause a written notice of the passage of this resolution to be served upon the owner or agent of the owner. Is that what you're...
It says each individual, right? Though, somebody can come to council, that's one way. Another way is administration.
Number A is what I think is confusing.
If worded...
Any member of council besides administration.
Would you like me to read it out loud?
Sure.
Yeah, A is any member of the city of Bucyrus administration or member of the public may bring to the attention of city council any existing sidewalk that needs to be repaired or area where a sidewalk should be constructed at the regular city council meetings. Upon receipt of information, the city council may refer the matter to the appropriate committee. Well, we don't want it going to the appropriate committee. It's not gonna go to the appropriate committee until after the sidewalks have been investigated.
Right, that's where subsection 1 and 2 come into play.
Well, and I thought that, well, I know I did, at Tuesday's meeting, or whatever, whatever meeting it was, that we were questioning the removal of that last sentence. Upon receipt of information, the city council may refer the matter to the appropriate committee. Because you already talk about that in B. So I, I don't know, I just think that sentence is confusing.
Well, yeah, but B is its own section. So, having something in B doesn't make it so for section A. You still have to have somewhere in there that the council may refer the matter to the appropriate committee. But the key word is "may", they don't have to.
So why can't B be 3? Be numbered 3? One talks about if a member brings the subject.
Right, because subsection 1 and 2 deals with members. Section B itself deals with the administration bringing a sidewalk to city council. It's dealing with the administration and their duty to do an investigation prior to bringing it to city council. The point of A1 and A2 is that if a, it has to do with members of the public. If somebody goes to the administration, then the administration has to investigate it and tell council. And if council has a member of the public come tell them, they give it to the administration to go figure it out, and the administration comes back.
So are you saying that B just pertains to the administration who's picking a sidewalk and saying?
No, it could be if a member of the public goes to the administration instead of coming here.
Right.
Then the administration brings it to our attention.
No, that's covered under A1 and 2. Section B is when the administration, in their normal course of business...
Right.
Doesn't say that.
No.
How would the administration discover it?
A citizen could walk into their office and tell them, and then they're gonna come and tell.
That's covered under section A1.
It doesn't matter, they can come and tell us whether Joe Smith pulled them or whether the trash truck driver saw it. Either way, they're gonna, they're gonna tell us.
Okay.
But I think the way it's written, it makes sense to me. You know, if it gets reported to them, they tell us. If it gets reported to us, we tell them.
And then they tell us.
And then they tell us. Exactly. It's a confusing situation, imagine putting it into words.
I know, I have in the Ohio Vice Code saying that the council has to act on it. I think still is just ridiculous. Mike made the comment to me, Mike Keefe, that he's worked other places and the councils never got involved, which, if that's in the ORC, I guess so be it, we have to, but...
Well, and, and he said that there was a place, it was like the place in the ORC that said we did, and the place in the ORC that said somebody else did, and the place in, like, a whole nother thing that said somebody, like, none of it actually aligns because so many people want to update everything, which is why, why we've been rewriting things and trying to fix that because we've had some of the same issues. I, I get that. But it's figuring out which one trumps which one in the first place. Like, are we jumping through hoops only to find out that something else had already trounced this?
I don't think so. I think when I did the original memorandum on home rule on whether or not city council had to still be the one to be in charge of the sidewalks pursuant to Ohio Vice Code 729.03, I concluded that the only thing in that that is not a general rule is whether she has to do it, or the clerk has to do it, or their designee, or somebody else could notify. That's, that's fine. But the other parts of it is a general law. And the home rule, we can't get out of that.
So can't we just make the administration the designee?
That's just for notifications.
Yeah.
To the people, once the resolution is passed.
Yeah, I think you should say if the resolution is passed. That's the other part that I have to issue with.
Yeah, if the resolution is.
What if that, that particular council doesn't want to pass that resolution? Then what?
Well, that's pretty clearly taken care of in C, where it says, shall cause written notice of the passage of such resolution to be served upon the owner or agent of the owner.
So if they don't want to pass it, then it gets dropped.
Yeah, it just gets dropped. And there is no passage, no one to notify of the passage, because there was no passage.
Moving on.
Well, do you have any suggestions on how to make it more clear?
No, I, I, listen, I have sat on my computer, not on my computer, but at my chair, or on my chair, at the computer, trying to figure out how to word this. And I'm like, no.
Okay.
Not, not at this point in time.
All right.
It's confusing. However, if you'll remember, back on December 3rd, I had an email to you reminding you that we had talked at some time at one of our committee meetings, and you agreed that there was no reason to include the different sections, that there was no revisions being done to. We only have to do in our legislation the section that's being...
Updated.
Yeah. Because all that does is just cause more work for Walter Drane when it's, and I don't know how they charge. when it's, and I don't know how they charge, if they charge based on, you know, what they have to type, but. Just to, I mean, you know, I'm just reminding.
That's a clerk question.
What's a hard question?
I said, that's a clerk question.
Oh, clerk question, excuse me. That and then the caption. Because I'm looking at the legislation that was given to us at the December 19th committee meeting. And I'm looking at the draft that was given yesterday. And it's, I mean, the caption, it, it doesn't match.
Well, this caption also says chapter nine and it should say part nine. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, it really should say, in ordinance amending and supplementing section, you've got amending and supplementing chapter 905. Now, if, if we're going to keep every section in here that we're not amending, then you're okay with amending and supplementing chapter 905. But if we're just going to worry about the section that we're amending, then we would want to amend and supplement section 905.01, which is entitled written notice under chapter 905, not chapter nine.
Sure, but more to Aaron's point, this was, I believe, turf to council or committee to look at the whole thing. And that's the only, only edits that you guys wanted, right?
Was the 905.01.
I say, if somebody had a question about something else, so we just brought the whole thing in. I remember that, I just don't know what all the.
And, and that's fine, but after you brought the whole thing in.
We hadn't seen anything.
We're only seeing changes to one section. So are you saying because we asked for the whole thing to be brought in, even though there were no changes to other sections, you still want to include that in the legislation?
That's my opinion, but like I said. We'll turf that to the clerk and she can answer. The, so they, they referred all of chapter 905 sidewalks. For review and revision. After the committee decided that they only wanted to mess with section 905.01, does all of it have to be included in the legislation? Or can we just have 905.01? I'm of the opinion that because they asked for the entire section to be turfed for amendment and the only thing that they chose to amend was 905.01, all of it has to accompany it in one nice, clear package to show that nothing else was amended. However, you're the clerk, so I'm putting you on the spot.
If you're just amending one section, I mean, it would be understood that the rest of it did not change. Especially when it goes to Walter Drain, they'll only update that one section rather than the whole chapter essentially.
Our resolution could even have a paragraph that says no other changes were made to the existing legislation. Okay, it's cheaper to publish that sentence than all those pages.
So what's the committee think?
Yeah, it's just that it only needs to be the one section. We've, we've pulled them all in before and only done one thing and that's all that's been messed with. Like, that's all the legislation was on for other things. So if there's no other things needed, but we didn't know what all was needed until we, we had to refer the whole thing because you can't talk about it if it's not referred.
Chris, I am not taking out everything that wasn't touched. I'm not doing it.
So.
That one's a little bigger.
A little bigger?
There's a whole lot of jumping.
I believe that entire, that chapter was referred because you guys were also looking at penalties. And then Mr. Keefe had made it known that the administration slash the zoning office did not wish to charge a penalty for sidewalks. I believe that's, yeah. That was the other section which made the entire chapter get referred, I believe.
So under A here, are we going to change anything? I mean, I understand it to mean that anybody can come to council or administration about a sidewalk problem. So we just, do we need a motion to?
Just remember, we have to change the caption.
Okay, you want to hold it over until we change the caption?
Then, well.
Pardon?
Was there a decision made as to whether or not the entire chapter that was referred is accompanying it back to council or just the one section?
I believe just the one section.
I believe it's just the one section.
So do I have a motion for the one section?
So moved.
With, with the caption changed?
With the caption changed.
I will second that.
Caption changed, okay.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Awesome. Aye. So. So we have resolution 245, 2024, appointment of Floyd Farmer to the BZA and BBSA. Does that look all right?
No.
Okay, where are we at?
In the caption. If you'll remember when I pointed out Tuesday, we needed to insert the word section.
Pursuant to the Bussaras codified.
Line seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, line seven, where it says Bussaras codified ordinance 1319.
Yep.
You don't have an ordinance 131910, you have an ordinance section 131910. The next line, and it's just a Scrivener, but the fact that we're changing, building is misspelled. And then I had also pointed out that the section three in the previous draft was just for passage of a regular piece of legislation. This is an emergency piece. So section three needed to have the emergency verbiage. Now I notice here that section three still remains in this new draft with the verbiage for passing legislation as regular. But then you also added a section for passing the legislation as emergency. So I believe section three needs to be removed and section four needs to be renumbered, section three.
Okay. Can we go ahead and make those changes?
Yep.
Bonnie, I'd like to call recess.
You just have to say the time.
Eight twenty-four.
Eight twenty-four. Plating committee back, back to order. Okay.
At eight forty-four PM.
At eight forty-four PM. Okay, we got everything straightened out. So can we have a motion for the part nine? 905.01?
I will make a motion to, to refer or to send the resolution or ordinance for 905.01 to, on to full council.
Second.
Aaron made the motion. Meyer seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those in, not in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Noted, passes. So we need a motion for 245 dash 2024 resolution. And we need to put Floyd Farmer, where am I at? Those minutes.
May I, excuse me, may I ask, I know we did that by voice vote. But if I may ask, when you do the minutes, I would like it noted that I voted against it.
Vicky voted against it. Okay, resolution number 245 dash 2024, point Floyd Farmer to the BZA and the BBSA. Do I have a motion?
Really? Okay, I will make a motion.
Aaron makes the motion.
To send resolution 225, 2024 to full council.
So Meyer sexes it? Roll call, Aaron?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Vicky?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Passes, goes to full council as an emergency. Open projects? Nothing? All right. Public participation?
It's 243, 247.
Meeting adjourned at eight forty-seven.
Thank you.
Finance Committee, January 9th, 2025.
Call finance to order at eight forty-nine PM. Members present are James Me, Christopher Moritz, Vicky Deshaun, and Kevin Myers, Chair. Public participation.
Kurt Fankhauser, 616 Prospect Street. Now first, I want to point out this meeting, we are almost three hours in on these regular committee meetings. The last one on the 19th of December was the same way. We had a bunch of visitors here that really want to hear what's going on in these finance committee meetings. And if this is going to be the new norm, I'm going to recommend that the finance committee have their own separate night of a meeting. Because I think it was very disrespectful that the, half the police department showed up and had to wait this long to the point where half of those that did show up have left already. So maybe in the future, have these finance committee meetings on the off week. Maybe on the following Tuesday. Last time I came up here on the 26th, I pointed out the manpower ordinance, which had originally been passed out of committee on the 19th and then went to special counsel and it had specific wording. And then it had a first reading, but didn't pass on the 19th. And then the second time it came up on the 26th, there was significantly different wording in there for the police and the fire chief. Okay? I did not find that out until literally the afternoon of the 26th. Okay? That is a major change to an ordinance. Mr. Brian, or I'm sorry, Brandon, what'd you say?
I said bless you.
Okay, I thought you were saying something to me. Anyways, I have looked into this matter. How did this happen? How did this ordinance get so changed up? This is what I've come up with so far. Okay, now, I'm not, I'm not calling for anybody to resign or anything. I just want to read this so that the public knows how this happened. Okay? I was provided, what's going on? Clarissa's over there making noise. Okay? I was provided this, these documents, except for one of them, was given from Vicky to Mr. White and then Mr. White sent it to me and I have it here now. So on the 19th, when this ordinance had its first reading and it was almost passed, it was almost passed. And it's thank God that it didn't pass because of how messed up that it was. But the 20th, my very first document here, the 20th, I've been provided that Mr. Myers made a phone call at 9:54 AM to Mrs. Deshaun. And Vicky, if any of this is inaccurate, let me know.
Well, that's what I'm trying to find in my paperwork. Because I think the first thing you're saying right off the bat is wrong.
That this here is wrong? It's a screenshot of a iPhone's outgoing call log to, or incoming, it says incoming call, one minute, 9:54 AM, December 20th, 2024. Kevin Myers is the contact name in the phone.
And that phone call?
I don't know what the phone call was about. I don't know what the.
Okay, I think you need to let the public know that all these documents that you have for me was in response to your public records request.
So you provided me with the same stuff that Mr. White was provided with?
Was, did you not get the email that I responded to saying?
Well, that's, that's interesting you say that because I originally did get the email and for some reason, it's not in my inbox anymore. It's gone. I, there's, there's something going on with the city's email that I think somebody may be gaining access into and deleting stuff. But that's a whole nother conversation, I'm not going to go down that road right now.
I found it. Okay, you start.
Okay. The, I, I tried to put these in order of from December 20th, early on in the day.
Well, yeah, because I, everything I scanned.
So the first one I have here was this phone call incoming, Kevin Myers, 9:54 AM on the 20th of December. Don't know what was said, it said it was a one-minute phone call.
Okay, do you see though, after phone calls, it says, from Kevin Myers, attached phone log copy, which you were provided. And then it says NC, and it's got in quotes, an asterisk below. If you will look below, the asterisk explains what that phone conversation was about. And not necessarily the actual phone conversation because he was returning my phone call where I called him and said, hey, can you come up here to City Hall? But it had to deal, it had to do with the discussion. Okay, first off, I think maybe, if you're going to bring this all up, let's let the public know. When, let's see, on 12/19, when we had the legislation dealing with the manpower ordinance and dealing with the budget. When the motion was made to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency. I, in air, voted no. I wanted to vote no when it was, came time to adopt those two pieces. And it states that right in, that little asterisk, it says, discussion on the effects that Shireman's absence from the 12/19/24 special council meeting and my no votes at that meeting on the motions for the second and third readings of proposed ordinance number 40-2024, which was the budget, and number 44-2024, which was the manpower, to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency. And the effects that my no votes caused and with the absence of Mrs. Shireman. It made both of those pieces of legislation not be emergency. They had to be held or they held at one reading. I then found out the next day that that was putting the city in danger. I then found out the next day that that was putting the city in danger of a shutdown, a possible shutdown. And also, the inability to pay the employees. I had no idea. Soon as I found that out, I mean, and if you'll read exactly how I have stuff, I informed...
What I have before me here doesn't have the asterisk with the explanation of each call log. I just have that there was a call made.
Where's the email that has everything outlined?
Vicki said his turn got missing.
Well, it doesn't really matter because the...
Yes, it does because I took a lot of time to make sure that I responded to your public records request with everything, identifying the date, identifying the time, identifying what it was for.
Well, all I'm trying to show here is a pattern.
Go ahead.
So I'm going to continue. The next one I have was a call from Chrismer. It's December 20th, 12:06 PM, incoming call, 7 minutes. Don't know what it was for.
The very same, that was the same asterisk? No, if you're going to bring it up, I want the public to know what it all pertained to.
Well, then, I, I'm sorry, I don't have that document that you have right there, but if you hand it over, I'd be glad to read it.
No, that's fine. This is my document.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'm continuing on. And this is a timeline of chronological events here. So then Friday, December 20th, 2:32 PM, the auditor sends a text to the council clerk, "Hey," this is what it says, "Hey, when you get back on Monday, the wages for police and fire chief and the manpower needs to be unchanged from the last legislation passed." Now, this was provided to me by the auditor. This was not in your...
Yeah.
And, and she quickly provided it. I applaud her and commend her for quickly giving this to me. Okay?
But just so...
And I'm not, I'm not criticizing her for this. She may not have known what the proper chain was to go here. My intent of all this is to explain to the public how this got to where it got, not to criticize anybody. Okay? So you have that. Then Friday, same Friday, December 20th, 2:42 PM, there is an email, Vicki DeShawn, to Jeff, I'm assuming this is Jeff Dunn. Must have been a response to a request from him for some copies of the former manpower ordinances? Possibly? That's all it looks like it is here. Same day, December 20th, 3:34 PM, incoming call, Jeff Dunn, 9 minutes. Also same day, 1:40 PM, incoming call, 37 minutes. Another email, 9:47 PM that night, Jeff Dunn to Vicki DeShawn, received, "Thank you." And you had provided him with what looked like several previous manpower ordinances dating back to 2019. Saturday, December 21st, 8:59 AM, I'm assuming this is a text message from Mr. Myers or you to him, says, "Please call me when you have a minute." Later that day, 9:21 AM, incoming call, 5 minutes, Kevin Myers.
Well, don't you want to know what the text was about? I mean, you're reading what the text said, but I could give you the substance.
What was it about?
I was calling Kevin because I wanted to know how many votes were needed. First off, the budget, as the law director pointed out, for whatever reason, and it's been like this forever, requires a three-fourths passage, three-fourths of the council members.
Correct.
The...
Now, to clarify, it doesn't require that by law statute, it requires it in the legislation to make it veto proof.
Right.
But if the mayor vetoed it, he'd essentially be causing a shutdown.
I'm just explaining that's why the three-fourths is in there.
And in the manpower, it's two-thirds. So there's a different number of votes that you need for legislation that calls for three-fourths than the number of votes that you need for legislation that calls for two-thirds. I, I was confused. I didn't know how, what those votes were, so I called Kevin to ask him that.
Continuing on, same day, December 21st, this is a 10:55 AM outgoing call, shows Brandon Gobrick, 27 seconds, 9:28 AM outgoing call, 11 minutes. The 23rd, incoming call, Brandon Gobrick, 5:09 PM, 5 minutes. The 23rd as well, 5:34 PM, incoming call, 10 minutes. This is from the city auditor.
And if I may, all of those phone calls had to do with the discussion on the effects that Shireman's absence from the 12/19-24 special counsel meeting and my no votes at that meeting on the motions for the second and third readings of proposed ordinances number 40-2024 and number 44-2024, to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare an emergency. And the effects were putting the city in danger of possible shutdown and the inability to pay employees. And informing everyone that that was not my intent, my no votes, I wanted them to be for, well, I didn't want, I was going to vote no against the budget and against the manpower.
Duly noted. Then December 26th, which was the day of the special counsel meeting that the...
Yes.
The budget was passed. I have 10:05 AM incoming phone call, Jeff Dunn, 25 minutes. Outgoing call, 10:43 AM, 1 minute. Later in the afternoon, 1:12:34 PM outgoing call to Jeff Dunn, 11 minutes. 1:11 PM outgoing call, 18 minutes. There's some text messages here from Mr. Dunn, but they don't appear, just says things like, "I'm free if you want to call me, we'll call after meeting."
And those phone calls on 12/26 to and from Mr. Dunn, as well as the text to and from Mr. Dunn, "to" meaning me to him, him to me, that had to do with his inquiries on why the fire chief and the police chief were receiving $4.25 per hour raise and his concern that the 2025, and his concern that the 2025 maximum pay for the service safety director appeared to be approximately $12 too high. I then, in those phone calls, informed him of emails that I received from Auditor Lewis concerning her recommending at the 12/26-24 special counsel meeting that the manpower ordinance be put on hold and referred back to committee.
Okay. Then I have an email, December 26th, Thursday, 1:11 PM, Kaylee Lewis to Mrs. DeShawn, "We are still looking at manpower ordinance figures for the positions you had mentioned. It would be my suggestion, we hold the manpower piece tonight and I am more than happy to make that recommendation to council." You responded back and said, "I agree." And then 2:31 PM, email from the city auditor to law director and you. Brandon, I believe we're going to hold the manpower piece tonight during the special meeting. There needs to be a correction for the salary of safety service director max, it should state, 2025, $86,702.72. The next time I see you, I would like to discuss breaking the police and fire chiefs out of the manpower contract and putting them in each their own pieces of legislation. There was a similar piece for superintendents in 2017, I believe, and it may make some of the gray areas a little more black and white. It seems as if the majority of confusion stems from the manpower wages being set in the piece, but due to their contract being negotiated different times, it may not be reflected accurately. When each contract is negotiated, we would have to reopen a manpower ordinance to correct for those changes. When all negotiations happened at the same time, it was not an issue. I had the fire chief and payable clerk in my office when we went over his pay subs, the manpower and IFAA contracts prior to 2020, where section 6 and 7 were added under the chiefs' respective positions and we were able to track the percentages or increase and why to the current 2024 year. The number listed in 2025 is currently correct, but will change after fire negotiations after our, are completed. The manpower ordinance will need again, changed again. Now, I do agree, you should, the manpower with the police and the fire being in there, the chiefs, take it out, put it in separate. And I have reasons that the safety service director and law directors should be separate, and I'll tell you why. When, when they're negotiating an ask-me contract, historically here in the last several years, whenever ask-me gets a raise, they just say, "Well, just, let's just throw this whole manpower thing in and give everybody the same thing." Well, what that means is, is that the people negotiating on behalf of the citizens for the best possible price for the citizens, they're actually going to benefit from that pay raise themselves. So you have people at the negotiating table. Now, I know you didn't know it at the time when you were sitting there. You found it out later.
No, I just want to clarify something. I don't believe the law director is in manpower.
Oh, that's right, it's assistant prosecutor.
Right.
It's assistant prosecutor, but since the two positions are combined, the law director ends up making more money. But in your defense, I know you had said you didn't even know that that was set up that way and you didn't know that you were going to be getting a raise, if it was to go through as was. But, so that right there, to me, is why the service director and the assistant prosecutor need to be pulled out totally separate so that they might not be incentivized to possibly get a raise themselves. I know it kind of sounds like, ah, but that's just the way I think it needs to be.
No, I can agree with that.
And then, so back, so back to this manpower coming before council at the special meeting on the 26th. I did not want to be at this meeting on the 26th. I had prior plans with Christmas stuff and I wasn't going to come. I actually told Miranda, I said, "I'm probably not going to be there." But then when I became aware of all this in like the afternoon right before the meeting, I had to come. And it was already on the agenda, it was already on the legislation that Kevin was on the legislation, his name was on there. And he did ask me if I wanted to run it. I said, "Nope, nope, you can run it." And so that's how that, I know there's some questions out there, why I was still there but not, but whatever. So anyways, back to how did this thing get, it actually was voted on to have a second reading with the different wording in it. I would have thought you would have, somebody would have piped up before then if they knew and stopped this thing from being voted on from having a second reading. But the second reading was voted on. Okay? The other, and this is the main concern to me, is how in the heck did I, as a president of council, not even, not, nobody even told me about this? And this had been known for almost a week, that this, this problem existed with this manpower ordinance. It never should have been in the packet that was sent out earlier that week. If it was known on Friday, it never should have been in that packet. If I would have been told, I would have not let it go out in that packet.
Now, Friday's December 20th, you're referring to.
Yeah, well, the auditor had this text to the council clerk saying that it needed changed. So it was known then.
Okay.
Now, whether you knew it or not, I don't know. Did you know it on Friday?
No. And like I say, my email explains all that, which my email, an exact duplicate of that email, was sent to Mr. White, who also sent me a public records request. You know, 44 pages and the hours that it took me to, but I was fine doing it. I was fine doing it, but it would be nice if, you know... When did you realize you didn't have this email? That it's gone out of your...
Today.
Today? Well, I'm sure Greg's sitting back there with a copy of his email.
I seen something come through a couple days ago and then I'm looking for...
But anyhow, here's the point. In my email, I said, "In my review of the 12/26-24 special counsel meeting, regular and revised packets provided to council and posted on documents on demand on December 23rd, my attention was on the agenda only, inasmuch as I was going to serve as clerk pro town, and not on the legislation documents." I had no reason to think that the legislation wasn't the same as what we had on 12/19. Let's see, so I was unaware that figures had been changed on the manpower legislation. The attached 12/23-24 email from Clerk Wise stated that the reason for the revised 12/26-24 packet was for the inclusion of the 2025 expense budget worksheet. And finally, inasmuch as my discussions with Auditor Lewis on Jeff Dunn's inquiries were not held with her until the morning of December 26-24, I do not know how or why the 12/26-24 special counsel meeting packets, both the original packet and the revised packet, which were, which were provided and posted on December 23rd, contain changed figures. I mean, I didn't even bring this to the attention of the auditor until 12/26. So how the changes were made on the packets that were posted and sent out to us on 12/23, your guess is as good as mine.
Well...
But I just want you to know that, no, I did not know that...
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to go after anybody's, I'm not trying, I'm not asking for anybody to resign or anything. I just want it to be known...
I could read an email here that tells different, but...
I just want it to be known that it ultimately lies on me is that packet going out...
We're airing dirty laundry, go ahead and read it.
Well, I, I guess I should say this, this is, this isn't the email that I received on the public records request from Mr. Fankhauser, but it's from Mr. White. Would you like me to read it?
No.
I want you to read it.
Has to do with, you know, who's...
I don't want to redo it.
Nah, let's not read it.
No, just read it.
Dear Ms. DeShawn, as a council at large elected official, I wanted to know what is going on with the manpower ordinance. This was voted on during the December 19, 2024 meeting, and now on the December 26-24 meeting, the ordinance was changed. Really, it was deleted and no one wanted to speak up on this. Who is all behind this? Kaylee even stated that you told her that something was wrong during said meeting on December 26-24. When did you tell Kaylee about this? You didn't speak up during that meeting. Why? You are always finding mistakes and now nothing. Something is not right about this whole mess and you are right in the middle of this. Why all the lies coming out of council? Are you benefiting from this? Is it time to tell the truth about everything and what is going on behind closed doors at City Hall? These serial meetings and round robin meetings need to stop. The cameras at City Hall don't lie about who comes and goes and to which office people go into. This pay raise for these city employees and the cost of the insurance that they voted for is going to cost dearly to the taxpayers. I will reassure you that I am going deep into these matters. The citizens of this community are going to know the true facts about everything. Remember that the true... Remember that the true facts are the best way to dispel the bad ones. How many more members of council have unclean hands? I believe the list is growing more and more. By the way, this is not venting. I am requesting public records law on everything you know about this subject matter. That includes email, phone, texts, and your personal visits to public officials and city employees. Thank you for your time, respectfully submitted Greg White. And as I indicated, Mr. White was given the exact paperwork that you were given, and he identified emails, phone calls, texts, personal visits to city offices.
Okay. Duly noted. But what needs to happen here, once legislation advances out of committee, it is now in hands of council. The committees have nothing to do with it. If something gets messed up, I need to be immediately notified so that arrangements can be made with the packets and stuff. And it sounds like you may not be at fault here.
There's no may not. I am not at fault here. If you would have listened to what I read, I did not have a conversation with the auditor until 1226, the day of the special council meeting. The packets that were posted on 1223 had the changes in them. I don't know how they got there because I didn't know about them and didn't tell the auditor until what, three days later?
So if you knew going into that meeting though, earlier that day on the 26th, that it was wrong.
Because she.
Why did you vote to have, you voted for the second reading?
Yes, you know what, Kurt, I did, and I'll tell you what, and I'm the same person who didn't know how to turn that computer on as Mr. White complained the other day. I mean, golly gee, if Mr. White was so concerned that I didn't know how to turn a computer on, why wasn't he nice enough to come up and say, Vicki, let me see if I can help you? I'm sorry, I made a mistake, just like I did when I voted no.
I accept your apology.
What, uh, what time?
I'm not apologizing to you. You need to apologize to me.
For what?
All right, let's keep it committee basis.
What time on the 26th did you discover that it was awry?
About 2:00 to 3:00ish PM.
Why didn't you let us know at that time instead of waiting to come to the podium?
Well, I'll tell you why. I'll tell you why. I wanted to see who all was guilty on this matter. That's why I didn't run this meeting.
Guilty.
Yes.
You're guilty. You're guilty for not saying that.
Let's keep it quiet in the gallery, and let's keep the subject matter committee related.
Back to your, the revision, the revised packet that went out on, earlier that week. The reason there was a revision.
Don't you know the day that it went out?
The 23rd.
Good, thank you.
I had Miranda put the whole expense budget worksheet in there because I thought it was good that the citizens would have a chance to review that for several days. Otherwise, it would never would have been out there. It never would have been out there.
So I.
Now, 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 I, I'm not, there's a lot of people that are new up here, and that's why I'm not going after anybody, because I think this might have been an honest mistake. But still, people need to know what their, who, who's the right chain of command here for this? This thing's turning into a free for all.
Kurt, you say chain of command. One minute you want to be the council president, you want to be informed, then we have a special council meeting, but you don't want to sit up there and be the council president.
All right, let's keep this.
I'm sorry.
Related.
I wanted to see who had unclean hands.
This unclean hands is getting redundant.
Okay, done with that subject. I'm moving on. I'm moving on. Further to the actual pay raises for these non-union individuals, the median income for somebody in the city of Bucyrus is far below what some of these pays are now, even before the raises. Okay? And everybody wants to talk about is fair, fair. Everything has to be fair. Okay? Well, how is this fair to the citizens that are making way less than some of these people get, propose to get these raises?
Why are you looking at me?
You're on the finance committee. You're the one that advanced this thing.
Excuse me? I'm wanting to advance what?
You guys are wanting to pass this.
All right, let's get to the point so we can move on. But as you stated, we've got all these people that were here and they're still sitting.
Well, I just want everybody to know, I do not have unclean hands with this mess up. And that's the whole point I came up here tonight. Clear my name. Continue off your meeting.
Any other public participation?
Can we quiet down the gallery, please?
Gallery has been requested to be quiet by the speaker at the podium.
Thank you. Greg White, 1125 Hill Chris Drive. Thank you, Mrs. Deshawn, for putting all the time and effort into this. I'm not blaming anybody either, but I'll tell you what, if somebody in council knew on the morning of the 26th of December, and emails and phone calls are being made, why wasn't the meeting canceled? Because it's not a script or error. Okay? It's a plain, plain and out, somebody did something wrong, and I really believe, in my true belief, somebody needs to confess to the mistake, because was it done intentionally? Was there intent to defraud the city?
Well, I'll, I'll end that right now. It's legislation, legislation's my job. I don't care if it was changed after it left my hands or not. The responsibility falls on the law director. Blame me.
Well, I don't, I understand you want to take the blame, but there's an individual behind the mistake. That individual needs to be known.
It was me, I'm sorry.
Kaylee, shut up.
Thank you. Because the other thing too is.
Yes, thank you, Tommy. Who is Spartacus?
So basically, so I appreciate the honesty, I really do. I mean, because this council hasn't been honest with the people of Bucyrus for a long time. You can say whatever you want, Mr. Shawn, after I'm done. But the thing is too, is these raises are outrageous. You just raised the water rates, you just raised the sewer rates, 14 and 15% to the citizens of Bucyrus, who will know about that bill in February. Okay? So people are already pissed off about that, even though it was voted on months ago, and were done months ago. But these pay raises of 425 are ridiculous. Okay? And I will go back what the law director said in the meeting. It says, the law director stated that, that the focus on, should be on discussing percentages related to inflation than rather than a specified dollar amount. Okay?
Well, yeah, but I said that that was what the new negotiation would focus around when the contract got reopened for negotiation at the end of 2025.
Right, but it all comes back to based on what happened with the insurance commission and with the insurance.
Well, it doesn't.
Yeah, it does.
Has nothing to do with that.
You're telling me that these pay raises weren't given out because city employees, I mean, they pay 15% of their insurance, the city pays 85. Okay? You're telling me right here, right now, that without this raise, if they weren't given this raise, okay, to this extent, that they wouldn't be saying, well, wait a minute, we can't afford our premiums. Okay? We won't know what the insurance is going to cost the city probably until, and I've been told, till March. Okay? And I've been told that. The city will not know completely how much it's going to cost the city taxpayers out of the budget, of the different funds, wherever they come from, what it's going to cost for this insurance. Now, I've heard some weird figures, I mean, anything from 175,000 to 265,000 to a half million dollars now. Okay? That's a lot of money. They had good insurance. They had one of the probably best policies they could ever, ever have. Okay? All right? They voted to get out and go on the open market, the insurance commission did, which is made up of certain people. Okay? So they voted to get out of something that they had bank on. Now, I've talked to a couple of city employees who've contacted me. They don't even know some of the treatments that some people are having or family members are going to have, if they're going to continue, be able to continue those treatments, okay, with this new insurance.
And then the insurance is 99.9% the same.
Okay, but they don't know yet. They're waiting.
No, we, we know, it's 99.9% the same.
Can I ask you a quick question? The insurance stuff doesn't pertain to this committee. That's, that was done between the insurance commission and the administration.
But it deals with finance.
Okay, I'm just, I'd like to get to the point to, to get these people to.
So basically, some, some of the things is, is we won't know till later what this is actually going to cost the taxpayers out of the different funds, because once again, I was told, and even the auditor said, certain projects, certain things are not going to get done. Okay? Because of the pay raises and probably the insurance. So that's a loss to the residents because are they going to get their street paved or not? Or are they going to get their curbs replaced? Okay? Or are we going to have another increase in the sewer rates in July? Okay? Because now we got to pay for a sewer plant that should have been done back in 2010, but nobody wanted to do anything about it. Okay? So now we're at the paying more money for wastewater treatment plant that should have been done years ago, and we could have drawn in businesses and industry in this town and not have to worry about this problem. But now it's a problem. Okay? So now the taxpayer is going to fit the bill for everything. We can't even get cruisers. There's nothing, we can't even get cruisers for our police department. The, what, most of them have what, over 100,000 miles on them?
I don't know the numbers, but I know the first batch of the ones we have now were bought in 2015.
Right. So we can't even, we don't even have money for police cruisers. Okay? The other thing too is, still, we don't even know where you're going to find the money if people decide to jump ship and take their buyout money from police and fire and say, heck with this, I'm out of here. Where's that money going to come from? It's not in the budget. Okay? Nowhere, no shape or form is this in the budget. Now, I know there are certain, one in the police and there's one in the fire that is in the buyout, and that's it. But what happens if these other people decide, or you guys decide, council decides to take the minimum manning down to four firefighters per duty? Don't you think these guys are going to say, I'm retiring, I'm out of here? What's that going to do to the budget? Okay? That's what I'm talking about, budget. It should be in there. It's an expenditure that has to be paid, but it's not in the budget. Only two positions are in there, but the rest of it is not. That's an expenditure, but you don't, you guys don't even know where you're going to get the money for that. How you're going to pay for that if, if you guys go, council decides to go down to four man per thing. The other thing too is, I think you need to put a pay freeze in. Right now, wait till six months till you see on this manpower act. Six months, wait to see what happens. You don't, you have no definite figures yet. It's all calculated. That's all you have is calculations. You have no definite numbers whatsoever. This manpower thing needs to be tabled. The budget needs to go back over, and the people of Bucyrus need to look and be able to come in and talk about a budget instead of being rammed down their throats. Okay? That's what needs to be done. There's no transparency in this government whatsoever. None whatsoever. Okay? I think it's time to come clean, everybody admit to what they've done wrong, come a new leaf or whatever you guys want to do. Okay, turn a new leaf, but be transparent with the citizens, you know? You know, I know that some people say, I know Ms. Deshawn, Mrs. Deshawn just told me, well, why do people contact you? Why don't they contact me? Because they can't trust you people. I've been told time and time again, they can't trust people on city council because they don't tell the truth.
You know, because we have heard this before, do we have to sit here and repeat?
First Amendment rights.
Have you ever repeated?
Yes, you do. Freedom of speech, please.
I'm being asked the question here.
Okay.
And you're not a lawyer.
Nope.
First Amendment can be moderated by the government in certain circumstances. You don't get just a free for all on the First Amendment. However, committee meetings are intended for the public to be able to come and converse with the committees, so even if we're going to be here until tomorrow, he has the right to say what he wants to say as long as it's on topic.
As long as it's on the agenda or in open projects. So I will end it at that, but the thing is, I would still like to know who changed the document. I mean, Kaylee said she did, but somehow it got put on documents on demand, so, and all that stuff, so, thank you.
Any other public participation?
Sorry, guys, we've already been here for 40 minutes. I unfortunately agree with the pay freeze, but I do not think we can start that until after we get the rest of this figured out. But at this point in time, we also have to figure out the wages for officials being elected prior to. I personally think that council should take a pay cut. I know I, not everybody agrees. I know that we do a whole lot of work for absolutely nothing in comparison to the amount of hours we put in. I get that, but at the same time, we have no funds, we have problems everywhere, we've got people accusing us of things, people knowing things and refusing to say them prior to, and wanting to come up as a soapbox instead. I'm, I'm not okay with that. I, I think that if you know something, and I, I've said it to Vicki when she used to come up here with correct events, why didn't you just email us? If you already knew, let me know, because I didn't know. You know, it, it solves a whole lot of problems when people know things in advance, rather than, you know, using it to attack. But I, I really think we need to look at a pay freeze for the next couple of years. I think we need to look at a pay cut, and I know that we need to get the safety forces levy back on the ballot ASAP, because people need to understand that we need the safety forces covered no matter what the other stuff looks like. And we know that that's one of the places that gets cut if it's not, because it looks like the biggest spending in our budget when we don't look at where they're bringing in money either, and since all that money has to go straight into the general fund, it doesn't make as much sense to people. I know there was something else, but other than that, we'll figure it out later, if you guys can, I'm sorry for all of us. Thank you, guys, for sitting through all of this.
Any other public participation?
Clarissa Slater, 3645 State Route 4, I'll keep it brief. Kaylee's open door policy, when I came in and spoke to her before, we had discussed how many times the budget, do you know how many times you rewrote the budget this year?
In the month of December?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. A lot, it was a lot, all the way up until near the end.
So I'm just going to make a speculation, and this is not to blame anybody, because we're all human, and I know your car's been here super late when I've driven past before, so I know you probably put a lot of hours in. When you were revising, the budget is coming through as legislation, so if there was any amendments made, and then it was sent to theoretically the clerk, and it was placed on, on there accidentally, inadvertently, with no ill intent, the, from my understanding, and I'm just, the president is the one who sets the agenda for meetings. There also the responsibility to make sure the policies and procedures are being filled out, and the whole gotcha moment, I want to make sure that the state, mistake is made before I come up and tell you, you did it, seemed very like not beneficial to the city as a whole. So I apologize that you guys had to be a victim of that, because that's exactly what it was.
Clarissa, that, everybody else has to stay on topic. Please stay on topic.
Yes. So basically, the question was asked, and I guess I'm just answering the loaded question, someone on council knew. Apparently, the only person who knew that there was a mistake and didn't attend to fix it until the mistake was made was Kurt, so.
Vicki knew too.
She just said she didn't, so.
Did the email prove so wise or other than that?
Kurt, no comments from the gallery. If you have public participation, you have to come up to the podium.
Any other public participation?
Any other public participation?
Seeing none, moving on. You have in front of you the minutes from the December 19th, 2024 Regular Finance Committee meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved. Check it.
Do you have an issue with them?
Yeah.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Me and a second by Mr. Moritz. Discussion, Mrs. Deschawn.
I think we'll wanna do what we've done with all the others, have them referred, or.
I see red pen on hers, so.
I'd like to change my motion.
Your motion would now be.
So hold the minutes till the next meeting, please. Table them.
Second. All right, I have a motion by Mr. Me and a second by Mr. Moritz. Any other discussion? Not all in favor, I will do a roll call vote, Mr. Me.
Yes.
Mr. Moritz.
Yes.
Mrs. Deschawn.
Yes.
I'm also a yes. All right, those are being sent back. The American Tire lease, I think we covered that earlier, that we're gonna request some further information before any decisions get made. Next, items ordinance 44-2024, the manpower ordinance. There's been much discussion about that this evening. What does the committee wish to do at this moment?
Before the committee makes a decision, I would like to remind the committee that the raises are budgeted for, and we do have the money for them in 2024, and the contract with the union is going to expire at the end of 2025, and we'll have to be renegotiating at a point where if everything goes wrong, we will have no money. So take with that what you want.
I have some suggested revisions to the manpower ordinance.
Four is yours.
In the caption, we're gonna wanna have retroactively, that it's commencing retroactively to January 1, 2025. And then on page two, where we have the service safety director, his maximum pay, there was an email between you and Kaylee on that figure that needed to be changed, and it has not been changed on this manpower draft that was provided in our packet.
Kaylee, was that changed?
I don't have the.
I swear I changed it.
All right, so while she's digging, this is all done retroactively back to the first of the month, correct? Or the first of the year?
Yes.
I'm gonna make a suggestion that we table this so that the proper revisions can be made at the proper place, not trying to quickly do them through while we're all here going on 10 o'clock in the evening, and let's get it done right and have a good document in front of us in our next meeting.
Can I add another change? And Brandon may have addressed this, I don't know. I've spoken to both chiefs recently, and instead of like Kurt was saying that I had mentioned breaking out the police and fire chiefs into a separate piece of legislation similar to a superintendent's, I've been speaking to them, also kind of going back to what Kurt was saying, they felt that it was improper to have their manpower ordinance reflect their contract with the unions, because they're supposed to be on administration and not negotiating, and benefiting from a negotiation with the unions. So they would prefer to stay in manpower, but have that portion removed, and then council can just set their salaries as they find appropriate instead of having a separate piece of legislation. Does that?
Yeah, so would you get with Brandon?
Yeah.
And confer with all of your suggestions? Vicki, would you also forward yours to the law director? Please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
All right.
So we can hold a special meeting or something?
If we need to, or it can wait, since it's retroactive, we can wait.
Two weeks, yeah.
Yeah, whichever. Elected official salaries, I think it's based on everything we're talking budgetary-wise, it'd be my recommendation, we leave them alone and do not do any raises to any of them.
Agreed.
Mr. Me, your thoughts?
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Brand.
Mrs. Deschawn. Yes.
I would entertain a motion then requesting legislation that sets those as an emergency as the clerk has to deliver those to the board elections here very quickly.
But now, are we only looking at, why do we have everybody here? I mean, we've got the mayor's figure in here through 2027. So aren't the only ones that we really need to address are the president of council and the council members?
So it'll be, it'll need to be amended so that elected officials can be paid for their, you know, work, because as you look on the.
So 2023 would need amended?
Yeah.
To change the date?
To change the date for council members that way.
From 2024.
Because as of right now.
For the council members.
Because as of right now, say that you choose to do nothing with this, and you, there's no, there's nothing on the books essentially for you to get paid.
Right, but we're not making any changes for the mayor or the law director or the auditor.
Correct. It was, it was for council.
Okay, that's just what I wanted to make sure.
So we need a motion then as an emergency to amend ordinance 2023.
Treasure has been, she's up this side.
Thank you.
And why do I wanna think the treasurer has her own piece for some reason?
She does. That was my next question.
Okay, so let's finish this, or we need a motion to amend 2023 to change the dates of the council members and president of the council to go through the end of '27.
It would be halfway. So, yeah. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. So that's the first thing we need.
As an emergency?
Absolutely.
So moved as an emergency.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Me, second by Mr. Moritz. Any further discussion? If not, Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Deschawn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kurt, did you have more on the treasurer one?
The treasurer?
Okay, 616 Prospect, Kurt Van Kuyt. The treasurer is a four-year term, is currently up at the end of 2025. So you're gonna have to pass for the next four years after 2025 for the treasurer as well. You could probably put it all on one, and then present one piece to the board of elections, because that's how it is now, is it's got the mayor and the two.
Yeah, I agree. All right, so then I need a motion as an emergency to amend, and I don't know the piece of legislation that previously had the treasurer, but to amend that previous piece of legislation to coincide with the end of her term, which would, end of that term, which would be 2029.
So moved.
And that also is to leave the pay the same.
As an emergency, yes, second.
But you say you wanna amend that piece, but I thought Kurt wanted this stuff.
Well, I think that's for the law director to decide if he can put it all together.
Oh, okay, all right.
All right, so I have a motion by Mr. Me and a second by Mr. Moritz.
Yes.
Yes.
Further discussion? All right, Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Deschawn?
Yes.
I'm a yes, motion carries. Street levy renewal, that was already talked about. We just have to give our blessing, so I'm just gonna ask for a roll call, yes or no to this committee's blessing to place that on the, to request legislation placing it on the spring ballot. Mr. Me?
Yes.
Mr. Moritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Deschawn?
Yes.
I'm also a yes. Ordinance 12, 2023, service director stays not prepared to speak on that yet. All right, failed to have the options. So I had a meeting Monday, Tuesday, I think it was Tuesday with the administration and the chiefs, and topics that we went over would include the following. Looking at ways of reducing current salary expenses by potentially reducing hours, utilization of part-time employees, looking at the out-of-town tax credit as a total and/or a partial, look back at those. And those three topics, I'm gonna ask each of the chiefs to come up and address, but before that, I also wanna say then the administration was also going to look at the tactics or topics of what they can do to attract any additional industry and business, as well as reach out to our state representatives to see if there's any chance of getting a bill presented at the state level to allow for the increase in sales tax percentages that are currently capped out. And then the last thing that was discussed was, we know, whatever we try to do to fix it going forward, that we already know that we're gonna look at about a $300,000 budget shortfall this year eating into our reserve costs, and so we just discuss ways that we could try to eat into that $300,000 budget shortfall until something else could be done. Because, for instance, if the out-of-town tax credit is the way that we go, then that's not gonna actually financially positively infect us until at the earliest May of 2026. So we've got a long gap in between now and then if that's the route. So are you two all right, if I start with the chiefs, or do you want me to start with you two? All right. Flip a coin, gentlemen, one of you can go first, the other can go second, or you can come up together, because you guys, we're in the meeting together, so.
They can't come up together.
They can. I don't charge this meeting, I allow it.
I allow it.
Yeah. Well, I kinda went through it in the order, if you wanna answer the questions, share, share what was talked about, because I think the intention of having you here is, I want everybody to know that we talked about a lot of these different options, and I want you to share the good, the bad, and the ugly, why some things are either good ideas, bad ideas, can do them, can't do them, might try them, those kind of things.
Well, and I guess to start off, the first one that was on the list that we provided was the reduction of salary expenses or reducing hours. You know, part of this stuff is, is negotiable, so we're, you can't, we're under contract with the unions, you can't quite change that unless you got an agreement with them. Anything of, you do in reduction of, of hours has an, has a direct impact on public safety. You know, it, for the numbers that we were talking about, you know, you, we were asked to see what a 10% or a 20% reduction in our, in our salary lines would be. For, for my department, that would be maintain, a 10% would take everything down to a minimum of five-man minimum, maintaining five, man, sorry, it's getting late, I should be in bed. Maintaining five, 24 hours a day, to go to a 20% would take that down into four. That would be totally devastating on what our ability of what we can, how we can operate. You know, we just, coming up in, in March, we have, are getting the ISO rating is being dropped down to a four. That's something that we cannot, that we cannot maintain with staffing levels that are at that level. The other thing, and I believe it was touched upon earlier, was that, you know, if we do, if we have to do something like this, it is going to cause a mass exodus of, of people because they're gonna be overworked.
Mass exodus of people, meaning your employees?
Employees leaving.
And just, I know we talked about it, I kinda want the public to hear this, and both of you can answer this question. Let's just say, even a small percentage of your employees leave, what happens?
Well, it's, it's hard, we're already in the, the position where it's hard to recruit. It's not like the days back when we got hired, you know. My list currently has only had three people on it.
How many people tested when you tested for the job here?
It was over 50.
And we had, when I tested, we had a gym full.
Yeah.
And like I said, my last list had four. Just to, you know, talk about reduction of salary expenses, if I do 10%, it's one dispatcher and two officers. If I do 20%, it's two dispatchers and four officers, and we just do the math, it goes right down the line.
Yeah, and Neil, you came up, sorry, chief, you came up and spoke, I don't remember when it was, about a year ago, and you gave an outline of what would happen to our crime statistics.
Correct.
Touch on that real quickly.
Right. I think I've been going out of my way to come up here with crime statistics, that we've managed to hold these numbers down, that our citizens enjoy a very good police service, they enjoy relatively low crime here compared to what it was back in 2012, 2013, when that was, I think, 14 of us. And like I said, everything was off the hook. I believe we had 22 robberies one year. I haven't done the crime stats for 2024 yet, but in 2023, we had zero robberies. Again, the burglaries were off the hook. I mean, we had so many burglaries that we took them just like private property accidents to work, we couldn't even work on them because there were so many. I think we had, it was over 340 burglaries, I think, in one year. And it's not that way anymore. These numbers are half of that.
Yeah, so I think the point that both of you made during the meeting, and I could give you the opportunity to reiterate that tonight, for either of the two departments, reducing your staff, which is already down, both of them, what I would consider to be the lowest possible levels for any type of safe atmosphere, is just, is non-negotiable, really.
I will say the police, our minimum staff right now is two officers and one person sitting desk, whether it's a dispatcher or an officer, if there's enough people working, it can't go any lower than that, that this is the same manpower the villages that are half our size currently operate at, Crestline, Upper Sodowsky, they're in these smaller cities. I can't go lower than that.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna put an officer out, I himself or herself, in this case, we have two women officers now, to patrol this city with no backup anywhere nearby, and I'm not gonna rely on the sheriff's office for that. They have 480 square miles of Crawford County to patrol as well as.
And both of you were employed here the last time there were layoffs, correct?
Yes.
Touch real briefly on what did you see within your departments? I know neither of you were the, the leaders of those departments, but what did you see during that time?
Well, for, for ours, we lost, you know, we end up losing a good employee that he ended up moving on and went and got a job down in Columbus. And it, you know, it, it leaves bitter feelings. The previous chief, he was one of the guys that got laid off one of the previous times. It leaves bitter feelings in, in, for your, you know, the rest of your career, and it's one of those, the city never wins or makes out when, when there's a layoff.
Why not, financially?
Financially, they normally do, don't, because they've, they've, normally it's always been for a very short period of time, because it really wasn't necessary. They do it to prove a point, but you end up, so you've gotta pay them out their, because of the contracts, you gotta pay them out their, their personal time and vacation time, and then when they come, you, you do the separation for the unemployment, and then when they come back, they get it, they get it all back.
And if you're.
So they get it again.
From the fire department standpoint, if your staffing were reduced, that would potentially cause more need to call in off-duty guys to back up when, when there are multiple calls at a time?
Correct.
Which would probably end up costing us more money than the normal schedule.
Correct, and it can, but that's one of those where with, what my current staffing level is, I'm having, I have a hard time getting guys, because they work so much overtime, I have a hard time getting callback.
Yeah.
So.
Well, what happened to each of your departments if you had an employee laid off? Where's that, what happens to that employee?
Oh, he's gonna get a job someplace else.
So when you call him back in a few months, they're not.
They're gone.
They're gone.
They're gone.
Yeah.
And like I said, what happens generally is, it's like dominoes. Like I said, if one person leaves, then someone else leaves, someone else. I think the last time we had attrition, it was three officers left.
And then the people who stay are working harder.
Correct. They're working more overtime, and like I said, we're running to the point now where, I believe, 10 or nine of our 12 officers that we currently have that are patrol officers have been hired since 2020, because everybody else that was hired was between, well, at least 2010 and 2020 is gone.
Yeah.
And then, I don't even know how many of them are left, between maybe two or three, between 2000 and, 2001. So we're already losing all of our seniority here.
Yeah.
It's a very young department right now. I will say they work well together, they work hard, they all get along, that we have a great, you know, it's like, I don't wanna break up the band, I guess you could say, because right now they're doing really good. But it's like I said, if we start losing people, it's gonna just kill the morale of them, it's gonna make other people work more overtime. We have, I think, six of us now that can retire anytime we want, and about the time you start making all those people work.
They're going to retire, maybe even less.
It's just gonna retire.
All right, so.
It's just not, this is.
Yeah, and then the, the other thing I was gonna say is, yeah, and then the uncertainty, all that does is leads into, makes it harder to hire people because people don't wanna take a job if they think they're gonna get laid off.
Because the new guy is the one that gets laid off.
Yeah.
So as far as reduction of salary expenses by reducing hours, you're, both of you So, as far as reduction of salary expenses by reducing hours, you're, both of you have stated a very good case of why we shouldn't be looking at that.
The only thing I have left, like I said, we have no luxury items in the police department. Not. I mean, like I said, we got like some paint on the walls this year. It was like the best that it got, I think. The only thing I can cut is hours of coverage. If you want me to readjust my shifts, so I have, I'm sending people home at 3:00 in the morning or something, or bringing them back at 7:00, then I'll be down.
Can either of you predict what time of the day an emergency is going to happen?
No.
That was a very rhetorical question. It was very loaded for a reason. I wanted that, that point made. There is just absolutely no way to know when.
And it's, and it's just, right, and you can't, and it's one of those, I've been working on my annual report, and I was, I pulled some of those statistics today, and as well as, you can't even determine what day they're going to be on. I've got, there's, there's two days out of, out of the average that are, there's 100 less runs compared to the rest of them. And it's not the same every year. It's just how everything happens.
When I was doing that, the only statistic that was true was that your nursing home calls are higher on Mother's Day and Easter than any other day of the year. It's the only two ones that you can bank on. All right, anything else on that first topic, gentlemen?
I think we've pretty much covered it. I mean, like I said, there's other than hours of coverage.
All right. We talked about how the, one of the biggest things on top of the salaries is the benefits, and then when people retire, the payouts. So, we brought up the topic of part-time employees. Can you share how that discussion went, what your thoughts are on that?
Right. For us, we have to all of our police officers, we train all of our dispatchers when they come in. The thing when you're training somebody for 24 hours a week instead of 40 takes way longer. And then by the time you get them trained, they stay for a couple months, and then they're gone because they get a full-time job, which are very abundant right now with a lot of places that pay better than we do and have better job security. So, I mean, I guess these are all things that I would like you guys to think about. And I, whenever we keep part-time employees here, we had, I mean, and like I said, we've had some, I think, a couple of part-time dispatchers that have moved into full-time positions. It's why we've managed to keep them. For the most part, by the time you get them trained, then they're, they're ready to go to a full-time job.
And then from our standpoint on it, there's, there was a lot of, normally with, for a firefighter, medic, or whatever, to entice them to come to work part-time, you have to offer them other, other things. Or normally, you're offering them chances to do other training and, and go other, there's, there's a lot of other side benefits that go along with it. But there's also a higher expense of to outfit somebody with gear, $5,000. It takes like $5,000 to outfit a, a person with turnout gear.
And why couldn't a bunch of part-time guys share the gear?
Because.
I'm asking stupidly.
Well, no, I know you're asking because.
Because I think the public doesn't understand.
Because if you, if you try to rely upon them to, to come, to come in on callback or stuff like that, you've got to have, they've all got to have their own set of gear.
Or you have to hire everybody that's 5'4", 195 pounds.
Yeah. And like I said, so it's not, it's not feasible, it's not feasible to do that.
Because gear is custom fit to the body.
It's, yeah, it's custom fit. So, there's, there's radio, yeah, there's, so then even upon that, there's radio expenses. To have everybody have their own radio, the radios now are, since we're doing with Mark's, they're $3,000 apiece.
Plus a monthly charge.
And plus a monthly charge, but luckily, I, when we know we have that expense coming, we've been able to get that stuff through the state fire marshal's grant. And the other thing it is, is that generally, to fill one 24-hour position, 24 hours a day, it takes like 18 people to, 18 people for that one position.
18 part-timers.
18 part-timers just for one.
That would contribute time across the calendar month.
I don't have, I don't have space for something like that.
Because you'd have 18 sets of gear.
Another 18 sets of gear in lockers to, for, for stuff like that. So, it's, it's, you know, general, most generally, when departments are transitioning, they transition from volunteer to part-time and then to full-time. You don't, you're normally not regressing backwards. We're in the middle of, we're in the middle of no, I shouldn't say we're in the middle of nowhere. The old saying was, we're in the middle everywhere. But we're, we're so far from a closest department, we, we don't have help that's close to us. If I cut my, and if I'm going back to, if I cut my staffing to where I rely upon callback, my other stuff shows that it takes, if I've got to rely upon to get a truck out that's using men that are, or that is staffed by people that are on recall, it's an additional 15 to 20 minutes.
How many firefighters do you have that live in town?
I think three.
So, if it's the day that they're not working, you have three people that truly could respond on callback, if they're sitting home doing nothing.
Right.
Waiting for you to call them.
So, we, we really rely heavily upon the, the local surrounding volunteer departments.
Yeah.
And we have similar problems. I mean, we issue everybody their own guns so they don't have to share a firearm. Okay, I mean, it's like you don't want to have two people show up to work and, you know, Miranda's got my gun today.
Yeah, it's your turn today.
You know, qualified on, right? You know, I guess we could ride together, you know? The same thing with body armor. I mean, that's all tailored to fit you. I mean, you got to worry about gaps in the front, or I'm sorry, in the sides and in the front. So, I mean, that would be a $500 or $600, well, maybe, maybe even more than that expense to outfit everybody with the vest. And then you turn around and just, like I said, have them leave for a full-time job. If you want to try to count on, like I say, someone from another department to maybe cover one day a week, that's all well and good until they get called into their full-time job where they actually are obligated to be, or they have court, and now they can't. Like I said, they're just a hell.
Because let's be honest, if I've got my full-time job, which is somewhere else, and you're my part-time job, and my full-time job is offered me overtime.
Or called you in. I mean, you're going to.
Yeah, and maybe I'm required to go in, or I'm going to go take their time and half versus your part-time pay, so.
Correct. I mean, it's just, I mean, part-time employees are not viable. And we also have, I think there's policy. I don't know. We'd have to look at the contract and everything like that to see if we could even do that.
All right. Anything else on those topics? All right, so that brings us up.
Not good options. They're just not good options.
Yeah, and that's part of what I want people to know, that we have had, and the meeting that we had earlier this week was a two-and-a-half hour meeting.
Correct.
So, we extensively went through these things and talked through them. That brings us up to the out-of-town tax credit. And I don't know if either of you have anything to say before I turn it over to Kaylee and Kelly.
I guess the only thing I would say is, just like what we said in the meeting there, is that if you have the services that you want, you have to pay for it. It's the same thing I said back a year ago. You know, if you want to have firemen and ambulances available to come to your house, then you have to pay for that service to be there. If you want a police officer to come to your house, you have to be willing to pay that. And unfortunately, it's expensive, and it's getting more expensive. And like I said, I mean, there's other, heard other things floating around, like maybe disbanding the police and having the fire department, or I'm sorry, the sheriff's office take over policing services in the city. And I mean, would say that, you know, when our guys hear that kind of stuff being said, it's not very good for morale, nor is it very good for retention.
We'll have to record it like that. That topic has never come out of this room.
I don't believe it's ever come out of this room. I heard it last, a couple of days ago, I think, in this room or out right outside this room, but you guys have never done it, nor has.
I just want to make sure that's, that's clear, that we have never suggested something.
Correct. But it's still, it's still something that is floating out there, and it's been floated, I think, at least twice. And I've heard it now this, well, I guess it's not this year anymore, but. But anyway, it's like, like I said, it's like when people, I guess, in positions do things that is a morale killer, definitely doesn't help, especially when, like I said, every, not every place, but a lot of places already pay better, have better stability, and have maybe some luxury items, like maybe some little bit nicer facilities and things like that. Like I said, we have a great department here that's giving great results. You know, we're not corrupt, we're not incompetent, any of that, any of those, any of those reasons that would be necessary to change out another law enforcement agency. And if you want to have good, effective police service here, you have to pay for it. Same with the fire department. You know, it's like, the city's chosen to take on contracts with, I believe, four townships or five townships now on the West End and North. They're going to be expected to have an ambulance come to them if they need it. And again, it's like if you want that, you have to pay for it. Find a way. And the out-of-town tax credit seems like it's about the only thing that we can do right now that's going to provide the staffing that both of us need. I'm assuming you feel similar?
Yeah, no, it's the same thing that, you know, I, you know, I feel very fortunate for the, the group of guys that I, or, well, I guess I can say that all guys, the employees that I have, that they're, they're very dedicated to the city and, and enjoy living or serving the citizens of Bussiris. So, you know, we have a very good working relationship with the police department. And, you know, we, we don't like being pitted against each other. And, you know, we, we do the best we can to work, work together.
And that's the same with my guys. They all work great. And I think Chad and I had this conversation, and actually I talked to one of his guys earlier today, that we're not doing this, police versus fire stuff. I mean, it's.
And I appreciate that.
You know, we're not, we're just not doing it. And, you know, we all have a job to do, and we all want to do it. We're not asking you to buy us brand new Cadillacs. I mean, we'll get by with the cars we have. I think we have four 2015s still. The rest of them are, I think, I guess, at least one or two 20, one 18, one 19, and I think 21s, maybe. So, we're not doing, we're not, we're going to, we'll make it through the year.
We're not as bad as we were 10 years ago.
Correct. Yeah, we're not, we're not having like bumpers fall off or paint that won't even stay on the cars anymore.
You can't see any holes through the floor in any of them, yeah?
Or any wheels coming off while you're driving.
So. Yeah, I guess I would say on that, on free equipment wise, we're just getting to the point where continued inaction of being able to purchase new equipment, it's going to come to a head shortly down the road.
And I think we're gonna, we know, it's not, I think, I know, we're going to have to look at options again for, you know, looking at a levy again in the future for equipment. I know Mr. White spoke extensively on that over the last year, and he's absolutely right. We need to make plans and have plans in place. But for right now, our more immediate need is how are we going to make sure that we balance our budget, don't dig into our reserves, get our people paid to have the services that we've come to love and expect. All right. Stay close. You might be subject to recall for some more questions. I'm going to turn it over to you two now.
So, again, I do just want to reiterate that. I do believe that this council has attempted in every way possible to go down the line of options before we're discussing the out-of-town workers credit seriously. So, we have some information to give you, but I would also like all of council, all committee members, all of council, any member of the public would like to stop in, because it's one of those things where you really have to look at it to have some, and have someone who's very knowledgeable about it explain it to you, to really understand why the percentages matter for the tax credit reduction, how the different cities compare, and how Upper Sunduski will have a 1% tax rate, and how if we give a 1% tax credit, we don't see money there because it kind of cancels each other out in effect. So, I, Kelly was able to pull some more recent numbers. I don't know how comfortable she'll feel giving all of them, but I will turn the microphone over to her.
Well, I was asked to come to the meeting this week, so I did start crunching some numbers, and I, I'm, they're not solid numbers. I will format these a little better so that you can fully understand those. We have residents that work in multiple cities with multiple different tax rates. So, when we say reduced credit, some of those credits aren't necessarily going to affect some because they pay a lesser percentage to the place that they work. I know that's hard to comprehend sometimes. So, like I said, I will get these numbers to better reflect to, to be able to understand, other than my spreadsheet. I understand my spreadsheet, but to the resident or to you as council, you may not understand my spreadsheet the way I have it listed for myself. What is it that you would like me to address?
I guess share what kind of dollar figures we're looking at.
I knew you were going to ask that.
That makes sense.
Just in the numbers that I have this week, reducing the, I have a reduction of credit in, in different stages. You can either do a 0% credit, that would be eliminating the credit altogether, up through 1.75, giving them 1.75 credit. So, all of, all of those figures reflect that. If we gave a 1.75% credit, that number would look like $325,000. Giving a 1.5% credit looks like $398,000. Giving a 1% credit would bring in $581,000. Giving a half a percent credit would bring in $814,000. And eliminating the credit altogether would bring in $1,046,000. Like I said, people move in jobs, people also move in and out of the city. So, those, those credits are based on this year's filers and where they currently work and the tax rates they currently pay. So, like I said, those numbers always fluctuate month by month, year by year.
Okay.
Okay.
We're going to go around the room real quick. Jim, questions or comments?
I got nothing. I tried to get rid of that in February, so.
Do you see four numbers on it?
Yeah. I'd be anxious to see them.
Yeah, same here. I mean, I didn't even know we were going to have this discussion tonight, so.
Yeah, and we are under no obligation to make any quick decisions. That's, you know, we have plenty of time. But I really wanted, A, to let people know that we're looking at, what are we going to do? Looking at all the options, trying to figure out what the best path forward is. So, when you get that information together, get it to Miranda, she can get it out to us, and we'll go from there and continue the conversation, so. Are there any open projects you wish to discuss, Mr. May?
No, I'm done.
Mr. Moritz?
Dude.
Mrs. DeShaw? I know it's 10:15 in the evening. I thank everybody. I do have one. Breuer's Festival president called me today and wants to know, do you have the numbers available for them? Because they are to the point where they have to sign contracts with somebody else if they aren't going to be able to pay you what you're asking.
Hi, I do not have the numbers.
All right. How quickly do you think you might be able to?
I don't think, if I may interrupt, those figures are really going to come from Kaylee, correct?
The income tax figure?
No, for the Breuer's Festival.
Oh, that's Breuer's Festival.
I mean, I think she computed what it cost, but I think the administration has to state what, because they're going to essentially enter into a contract.
I can provide the figures, yeah, but they would be the one I would believe who would enter into any contract.
Could you get with them in the coming days and decide on what, what number you're going to ask them for so that we can let them know?
I mean, we're not going to have anything to do with that.
I think we have, I don't know if we have to approve it or not, but.
Would you guys like to have some discussion on it or anything like that?
Yeah, we probably ought to.
Yeah, we always have legislation.
So, like a one-year legislation?
Yeah.
Yes.
Resolution, yeah.
But his point was that they need to make a decision and sign a contract with somebody else if they can't make this work.
So, have they made a decision on trash police or anything?
That's where he's coming from. He says they, they have to make a decision if they're not going to want to pay the city.
I talked to one of them. They said they were waiting for.
I talked to the board president today who asked me to ask this, so.
Okay.
He's waiting on a number.
That's what I wanted to know.
He's waiting on a number, yeah. All right, that's all. Public participation, Mr. White.
Thank you. Greg White, 1125 Hillcrest Drive. I believe, I appreciate both chiefs and their comments and stuff like that. And I'm the one that came to counsel beginning about the levies. I would like to see, no disrespect, and not trying to divide the safety forces, but I really do believe our police department needs good cruisers, okay? I've told you that before many, many times. So, I'd like to propose that, and I know the deadline is here, but you're not going to get it done for probably March, but possibly in November, is putting on a 1.1 mil or 1.5 mil for vehicles only, okay? If you do a 1 mil, Kaylee can correct you on this with my math. So, 1 mil would bring. If you do a 1 mil, Kaylee can correct me on this with my math, so 1 mil would bring in $187,000 a year, because we have 18, 186 something, 18.6 million dollar.
Is that on the updated valuations, the old valuations?
No, because new valuations aren't up yet. I know that for a fact because I checked today.
Okay.
So it could be a little bit more. So basically, a 1 mil levy would only cost a resident $35 a year, because it's, that's what the rough estimate is.
Based off of the average?
Based off of.
Or is that on a $100,000?
That's on a $100,000 valuation.
Okay.
So $35 a year. I think it's worth looking into. I mean, if you guys want to add the fire department in there in case we need to buy a new squad or whatever, go 1.5. But I think the voters would actually really seriously look at that type of number more than a 3.5. Because if you really look at, if you go for 1.5, basically on a $100,000 valuation, they're looking at maybe $45, $50 a year. No, that's not based on the new valuations.
Right. What was your number on 1.5?
Basically, one, well, you just take $35 and divide it by two, that's a rough.
No, I meant for the total income.
Well, you just take $187,000 currently.
I don't know, if you had it written down, I'd have loved to.
No, no, I'm, I'm trying to jiggle this a little bit just to get my math down. So basically, you're looking at what, $240-some thousand dollars? Okay, just getting our computer out real quick. So basically, that's what you're looking at.
About a quarter million dollars.
Yeah. So I mean, that would buy at least two police cruisers a year, okay? And put some money aside for, you know, other fire department vehicles or whatever that, you know, might need to be replaced or whatever, or refurbished, you know? So I mean, that's a rough estimate, but I think that's something that needs to be seriously looked at.
Can I ask you a question as a voter?
Yeah.
Because I, we, we run into this with the current levy that's on there now, you know, where they had said of, you know, do it a quarter percent, and after the fact, like, oh, gosh, we probably should have done a half percent to try to be more in line with where it should be. What happens when we go and ask for a lower, like a 1.0 or 1.5, to try to make sure that everybody's comfortable paying that, and then we realize it's not enough for what we need?
Do it what you got.
That's why I'm asking you as a voter, do you get, do you get more upset when we come back to you than in two more years or more?
I would look at it this way, if you came to me with 1.1 mil or 1.5 mil for vehicles only, that's it, for vehicles, I think it would pass in the city of Bussaras. I think the voters would actually vote for that if they know that the police department could possibly get two cruisers a year to replace the bleeding fleet, and then the rest of it could be used for other fire department vehicles or whatever, okay? To refurbish whatever we need to refurbish, because you don't need to buy new, it's three years out, and Chief and I, or Chief had a conversation about that, it's two, three years out before you're going to get a new medic squad. So my thing is this, with that kind of figure, at least we would have that, okay? We'd have something to go on, okay? Not going, going for the Hail Mary Pass, but at least we're going for something, and throw it out to the voters and see what they decide to do. Let them decide what they want to pay. I mean, $50 a month or a year, or mine would be a little bit higher, maybe about $75, $80 a year. I'm comfortable with that. I'm very comfortable with that, even if it was, if it was around $100 a year, I'd be comfortable with that, knowing that this police department would have some new cruisers to rely on, okay? To respond to emergency calls within the city.
That's exactly what the police chief said.
Yep.
You get what you pay for, and if you want good things, you got to pay for good things.
But the only thing is, to, you know, to a point.
Sure.
You got to start somewhere, and then you can build on it, okay? That's all.
See, either of those two guys aren't trying to buy a Cadillac right now.
Yeah, I know. But what I'm saying is, okay, it's what, 68, about $68,000 for a new police cruiser?
I'm blocking your hand.
Yeah, down the park. So I mean, you know, at least we could build on that. At least they start instead of.
You are not wrong.
It's a start to go on. Thank you for your time, and I'm sorry.
It's not a terrible idea. Oh, no, I know.
Kurt Fankhauser, 616 Prospect, and the chief, the police chief just told us tonight that he is at minimum staffing right now. Is that correct?
That's, we have a minimum staff. If it goes below two and then one dispatcher, then we have overtime.
What would you consider full staffing?
Full staffing.
Yeah.
We have, we would need five officers on each shift.
When was the last time we've had staffing levels that high? Did we, did we ever achieve it after the early 2010s levy?
Neil, can you come up to the podium?
Yeah. I think in 2014, 2015, I think somewhere in that range, we may have got up to 20 or 21 for a minute, did not stay there for very long, and then, like I said, since then, we've been running at 17, 18. Like I said, we have a conditional offer out to a guy right now, and if we had him, he would be 19. 22 is how many we're supposed to have.
So when that 2010s, early 2010s levy was passed, that was to, our intention was to take the police and fire back up to full staffing?
It was 2013 is when the safety forces started collecting in 2014.
They're at the bare minimum staffing right now. We're $300,000 in the red with this budget, and Mrs. Schimpf over there gave us some numbers of about what would it take to take 300,000? My, my curiosity is, what would it take to get this police department back up to full staffing? What is that number? What exactly is that number? And, you know, a year ago, we had this almost exact same discussion, and I kind of, it was, I, I sat over there at that monitor and gave a presentation to everybody, and it was kind of my idea that it's, I felt like we were, we needed to generate another million dollars a year in some way, okay? So we're, we're $300,000 now in red, and the police, and that's not even getting us to full staffing. If you add some more to that to get the police department at full staffing, plus you add the cars and the vehicle, we actually are a million dollars short. That's actually how bad this is right now. It's not, we're $300,000 short, we're actually, we need a million dollars of revenue to get this city with their safety forces where they need to be. Something to consider, and Kelly, I, you sat here for over four hours tonight, and I can just see over there how exhausted you are. I think the next time we have a meeting like this needs to be done on a separate day, earlier in the day, just because, I mean, I commend Kelly for coming and staying. Any other public participation?
Ladies and gentlemen, at 10:26 PM, thank you so much for your time.
Ouch.